Good evening and welcome to the September tenth meeting of the Ithaca Common Council and Committee of the Whole. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. I note the absences of all the person Brown and all the person Shapiro, who informed me earlier this week, he would not be in attendance. Agenda review, any additions or deletions to the agenda before we continue? Seeing none. May I please have a motion to accept the August thirteenth Committee of the Whole minutes? That is moved by all the person Saint Perez, seconded by all the person Matos. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the minutes? And that carries nine zero. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for amendment number one to the 2024 HUD Entitlement Annual Action Plan that is moved by all the person Hand Sharp, seconded by all the person Saint Perez. All those in favor of opening the public hearing? That carries unanimously nine to zero. Seeing that the only people here are city staff, I am going to assume that there were no signups for the public hearing, deputy clerk. I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing, moved by all the person Matos, seconded by all the person Saint Perez. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? That carries unanimously. I will now entertain a motion to open the 2026 Sidewalk Improvement District Assessment Roll Public Hearing. That is moved by all the person Saint Perez, seconded by all the person Kumar. All those in favor of opening that public hearing? That carries unanimously. I continue to see no one from the public here other than city staff, so I will now entertain a motion to close said public hearing. That is moved by all the person Letterman, seconded by all the person Keel, just to spread around the love. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that carries unanimously nine to zero. I'm now going to look for someone to summarize and move the resolution for program amendment one to the HUD action plan. All the person Letterman, you recognize?
This is a resolution to make an amendment to the 2024 HUD entitlement annual action plan. It will add $70,000 to include the Cherry Street sidewalk segments and subtract $70,000 from the Economic Development Loan Fund. I so move.
Thank you, all the person. Is there a second? That's seconded by all the person Hand Sharp. Nels is here, but are there any questions or comments on this? I know there weren't previously. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this resolution? Yeah, oh yes, thank you. That's all the person.
Could this be placed on the consent agenda for the October, for the special meeting on, was it the seventeenth, September seventeenth?
Friendly? All right. Then with that, all those in favor of resolution? That carries unanimously. Without objection, council, I'm going to ask that we slightly tweak this and just next to do the amendment to the personnel roster for planning and development and then get into our substantive items for discussion. May I summarize and move on the amendment to the personnel roster? All the person Kumar, please.
To fund the newly created senior housing inspector and add to the department roster, defund one housing code inspector, but retain on roster, budget neutral change.
Thank you, all the person. Is there a second? Seconded by all the person Matos. Any discussion or questions for the director of planning on this? Again, this is approved in the budget and all the person Fabrizio, you recognized?
I wasn't even sure I was going to say anything. I think I just wanted to ask, when I looked at this quickly earlier, it didn't look like it included the benefits. And I was just going to say for like purpose, you know, for the public and for us, it would, I think it would be great to show what the actual costs were rather than just the salary that's on here. Since it's forty, it's like forty percent on top of that, correct? Approximately?
Salary benefits. Benefits are ranged generally about to be forty percent, but it really does depend on salary. If you lower your salary, the higher percentage.
Right, so, right. So for this salary range, for housing inspector, the range is between sixty-two, six thirty-eight, and seventy-four, four seventy-one for 2025. And I seem to remember from like other discussions, maybe last year, that often we're hiring people into like the, their five steps, is that right? Into like the fourth or fifth step? Four steps. So would you anticipate that this is on the sixty-nine or the seventy-four thousand dollar?
Sixty-two.
Oh, it says sixty-nine on the, so this, the chart says sixty-nine, sorry. Is it sixty-two?
I was looking at the resolution.
So it would depend on, it's envisioned as a promotional position. So it depends on the salary of the person who's being, based on CSEA contract. They're placed in the next salary, in the next grade, based on a required percentage that they have to, that is a grades, have to make at least X percent.
And do you know what that ballpark figure is? Ten percent? So this, sorry, is this sixty-nine, three-nine, four, not the correct number?
All right, seeing no further questions, please.
Hi Lisa, just yeah, one quick question. With the senior housing inspector, would it be a possibility to like have them look at which properties have certificate of compliances and like are, you know, like have no violations for like the public to see, kind of to like better ensure tenant protections and, you know, safety?
That is not part of this change, but I understand that that's something people are interested in. We certainly look at how we can provide that information. I mean, you can get it now, but it's a little laborious to get to, so.
All right, all the, all the person Fabrizio, you're recognized.
And I just wanted to ask, I know, I think you said last year, we only, and this year, that we only have like one housing inspector. Is that correct? For, yeah, for the whole city?
No.
Four housing inspectors. Is, does the housing code supervisor, are they actually in the field or are they, is there sort of managerial supervisory position?
That position did go in the field sometimes, but it was primarily supervisory and file approach.
So, so we have four housing code inspectors. So we only have, maybe what I'm mixing up is we only have one person who's doing exterior property maintenance ordinance violations?
Person forces the exterior.
And do you see in the near future, an increase of like a shift in the department in terms of like people's focus or work so that we would be able to increase that?
That hasn't been a directive that I've gotten, that, that position has, was always one person to implement that, but certainly as any of the code inspectors can do that work. And certainly if the workload changes, we could.
Because it, it seems to me like we have a lot of, like we have a lot of properties that aren't being dealt with. And when I've talked with people in the building department, I've been told we only have, we only have one person who's out there doing it. So I'm just hoping that we might think about how we would be able to increase that and also to make it possible for exterior property maintenance ordinance violations to be easily tracked. There's still the issue of them not being accepted anonymously. I think this is a huge issue for tenants.
All the person, please remain germane to the topic at hand.
Well, I thought, well, I had the chance.
Just come talk to me, there may be opportunities to raise the gas.
Thank you.
Any further questions on the amendment change? Roster amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, and I'll also have the record recognize all the person Brown has joined us, all those in favor of the resolution is moved, and that carries unanimously, ten zero. Yes. Yeah, everything, everything unless otherwise specified, we're going to assume is being moved to the next voting meeting, which is next week. With that, thank you, Lisa, and we'll also invite up our deputy director for zoning. Hi Megan, thanks for joining us this evening. And thank you for providing that memo in advance of tonight's conversation.
So tonight, I wanted to talk with you a bit about two zoning related topics that we're going to hold on to further. This update, it starts with, okay, the zoning rewrite. So as you all know, we received a grant from the New York State Smart Growth Communities Program to do a comprehensive update to city zoning ordinance. The city zoning ordinance was last adopted as a new ordinance in nineteen seventy-seven, and so this will be the first time we're doing a comprehensive update in that time. Certainly been amended many, many times since that adoption. The goals of the new zoning rewrite, or the zoning rewrite, will be to create a code that's easier to understand and use, to modernize our land use regulations to accommodate current needs and new technologies, remove barriers to housing, and achieve greater compliance for existing properties. So essentially, the, the new zoning ordinance will implement, codify Ithaca, our adopted neighborhood plans, and smart growth principles that both, all of those documents are based on. Pretty much the entire zoning ordinance will be on the table to look at, including zoning districts, their exact boundaries, as well as use area requirements for each district. We'd also like to include the city sign ordinance, that is another, while not part of the zoning code is related and in desperate need of. So our progress on this today, over the summer, we have completely executed the grant contract with New York State. We've also completed a technical assessment of the zoning code, which suggested some areas that should be of top priority, and also kind of a framework for how we might think about reorganizing the code into a more digestible manner and that can be understood and followed more modern approach. Right now, we drafted a request for proposals for consultant services. I'm going to explain the timeline on that in a minute. And we've established an internal staff team and a structure for the zoning advisory committee, which is a group of community members that will help oversee the project and give input throughout. So the next steps are, we're planning to issue the request for proposals in September, and then followed by the selection of a consultant team in October. Around the same time, we'd like to establish the zoning advisory committee and get the members in place so that we're ready to kick off the project. Once the consultant is on board, the committee will be ready to get hit the ground with it. The first task that the team and, the consultant team and the committee will work on together will be a public outreach plan. It will involve considerable public outreach at different phases of the project. So that'll be their first task and have that forward in the plan itself in early part of next year. So rough timeline is noted here on the screen. The official kickoff of the team and the committee will likely be in November. The first public outreach will be in the winter of twenty-two, six, and the adoption of the new zoning in its final form will be eighteen to twenty-four months from kickoff, with interim deliverables. That's a long time. Yes, it is. However, there are steps that council can take to help facilitate that process, and there are also some changes that you all could consider to the existing code as a step until the, the new code is adopted in its entirety. So what that could look like in terms of facilitating the process, we know some issues that are going to be hot topics for key discussion points. So one thing that could start earlier is to have, identify those issues, discuss them amongst yourselves, get community feedback, and ultimately determine a policy direction on those issues for when the consultant is on. One of the challenging things as you're deciding these big issues, the consultant really needs the policy objective of the city in order to develop code to implement that objective. So some examples that I've heard members of council mention could be off-street parking requirements, single-family districts, and minimum lot sizes. So those are all things that we could discuss, do research, to get feedback on, so that when we are ready at that phase to speak, to work with a consultant on the specific regulations, we'll be able to say, we've done outreach on this topic and we would like to remove all minimum requirements for whatever the decision might be. Additionally, there are, you can consider amendments to the existing zone prior to the adoption of the new code. So yes, we are moving forward with this effort, hope to have within the eighteen to twenty-four months a full new code adopted, but there can be changes now if that is something that is just to do. So that is the piece on the zoning rewrite. I thought I'd stop a minute to see if there was anything you wanted to discuss, if there were just key issues that you all already have on the front of your minds or any questions.
All the person Saint Perez first, and then I'll keep a list.
So in terms of changes that might occur during this process, do you see that more as like kind of a form of phased implementation or, or something different?
It certainly could be kind of a way to think about it as a step the council has chosen to take, and that would be adopted into the current code if, and then that would be incorporated into the new code once we're ready to do so. So for example, the ADU policy that you all recently adopted, we don't expect to go over every detail of that again because it is a new decision and that kind of framework has just recently been established. So in that case, they might take most of it and find an appropriate place for it in the new code, identify any conflicts that we would then look at, but otherwise, the goal is to kind of keep those newer pieces tapped. Does that answer your question?
In part. I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is from, from a, you know, safety, stability, strength of the city perspective, is it, is it better to have an entirely new code come in all at once everywhere, or is it better for it to, to phase? Because part of what I, part of what I heard with having changes happen over the coming two years before it comes into effect is, especially if those are going to be worked into, into it, is that preferable, I guess is my question.
That's probably honestly more of a policy decision for all of you, whether you want to see it go into effect before that timeframe or all at once. I would say, I don't know if I want to call it a challenge, but one of the things about our current ordinance is there's so many sections and provisions that are intertwined with one another that it's often not as simple as changing the, the language and, you know, section three twenty-five-nine to match and update it completely. We'll have to go through and find all of the other sections where that's referenced and a different requirement and, which is part of the reason we need to do this effort to begin with, is to have it mixed in, or be clear where you can find it, all the information is not. So that would be, like I said, I don't want to call it a challenge, but something we have to pay more attention to now as opposed to.
Thank you. All the person win, you're next.
To address Pierre's question, my policy preference is certainly and has been to do a wholesale, right, in the style of, the famous example is Minneapolis Buffalo, something that addresses all of our, our policy priorities. And on that front, I'm curious what staff, and I'm asking the mayor too, between the two of you, what mechanism you need from us to get that policy direction? Is it a resolution ultimately, or our policy advisory groups, or some combination of those?
I can answer first. There might already be a drafted resolution that reflects some of the items that Megan summarized about conversations that folks already have expressed interest in exploring for council consideration, if that sounds like that's the direction council wants to continue to go in, that would be able to provide clarity of direction to staff, and I've worked it through with the department. And so if that's the direction the council continues to want to go in, that can be brought forward.
Yes, I don't really have anything to add about if that's the route you want to go. Like sometime, once we know what kind of the direction is, we can do some research and see how many of these have addressed certain things and bring back to kind of a menu of options and you select what you'd like to.
Next, I have all the person Fabrizio and then Keel.
So just, just to give everybody like a little sampling, and you mentioned a few things, off-street parking requirements, maybe minimum lot size requirements, height. Are there, what do you see as the, what does the staff see as like the key issues that this initiative will address?
Meaning within the zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
Topics. So I think there's, there are quite a few things, but one is we have overlays and forty zoning districts right now, which is a tremendous amount of city of our size. So, and some of them are very similar with a few, the exception of a few area requirements. I think it'd be good to look at that, to see what we truly need to have be a separate district versus what we could consolidate to make it less complicated, seeing what the requirements are. I also think the zoning, we have an updated comprehensive plan, and there are areas where we want to change the zoning to reflect what the land use that plan is calling for. For example, a lot of our properties are not, they're, as we all know, they're not in compliance with the current area requirements. Yeah, they are properties that, in neighborhoods that people really love and want, would like to be able to see created, a new house, a simple build, building. So that's something else to look at, is to see, again, clients with current regulations and the upcoming ones to make sure the zoning is allowing the kind of development. So some of the members are certain stakeholders are required, we have heard of the committee by the state grant. So there will be some roles to be explored. And then beyond that, they are requiring a broad range of community interest. Right now, we are planning, once our PIS out to issue a community announcement with an opportunity, people submit and just, if they are interested in certain, and we would love all of your help to get that word up as part of the.
So that's, that's my next topic that I just wanted to bring up. So we always do these public hearings, and I know that there's the requirement to use the Ithaca Journal, which overall, nobody looks at. And I'm just wondering what we need to do as a city to change, I mean, I know we have to still fulfill that requirement, but I'm just wondering what else we can be doing besides, you know, us trying to send to as many neighborhood listservs as possible. I think the city needs to be way more proactive in terms of, you know, getting information out there so that we, you know, people really are, do have the opportunity to be engaged and really do show up and, and like tell us what they're thinking. I think, you know, hopefully with the changes that have happened in, in Allen's area, that, that we can see like an uptick in, in how we're operating in that way, but I would just like to see that and, you know, every department that's doing any kind of community outreach like that, I just think we're, we're just not, we haven't really hit it yet on what we, on what we need to do, so.
I'll just add, I mean, I think all the person, you are probably the most active in doing constituent outreach in your ward, and I would sort of use that as an opportunity to gently encourage the other eight council members at the table right now to do some of that, because I think that ultimately, there is, staff has prescribed channels through which they can do a lot of things, and I think one of the things, one of the chief responsibilities of council members in fact, is to do that community education and engagement. And so little hat tip to your outreach, but also urging my colleagues to do the same so that this information can be more appropriately circulated.
Yeah, I, I mean, I remember sitting, I remember sitting in this room, we had a meeting maybe like thirty years ago, and I was trying to get together then like cross-city neighborhood association listserv, right? But we do have listservs in all, in so many segments of the community, and I think it would be great if we, like if the city staff had potential access to.
Yeah, I think wide engagement on the outreach for, for interest on this, let's, I just see some other hands cropping up, and let's just make sure that the follow-up questions are about the zoning update we've received and not pushing us far afield of all the person Brown. Oh, I'm sorry, all the person Keel's next, I'll add you over to the rest of the person Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really excited about this. Obviously, I, my question was going to focus on, was going to focus on the community group that you'd be assembling, and thank you for answering questions. I just wanted to reemphasize how, how important I think it is that we're making sure that we get a broad swath of the community, that we have a very diverse set of voices in that room, and also that we have elected voices in that room, whether it's from the city or, or from other areas. I think if that's going to be an important part of the, the puzzle is, and also making sure that the meetings of these folks and the thoughts of these folks are broadcasted publicly and they're engaging widely. So, thank you.
All the person Brown, you're next.
I'm going to try to keep this germane. My question is, for one, I think the city has quite a few different departments that, that can also help do this work of outreach. I know I've been here for some time, and it's been very important that we all look at every, every area as our areas, you know? I, I'm Ward one, but I know in order for Ward one to work and have the best information is through us all working together. So thank you.
Any further questions on zoning direction? And then I think Megan will continue the discussion otherwise.
So our next topic that we wanted to get back to was the south side zoning. The QR code in the upper corner of the slide is if you want to bring up the page that had the draft zoning, which was emailed out, but it's easier to read that. Okay, so we were presented the draft at the June Common Council meeting, and there were five recommendations from Common Council meeting to changes to that draft zone. So those are noted here, and we will go through them one by one. To get additional feedback in the neighborhood, circulated a survey that was for about three weeks to get feedback on the proposed changes. And. Circulated, circulated a survey that was for about three weeks to get feedback on the proposed changes and we received sixty-six responses and fifty-seven of those were from uh, people who identified as being South Side residents. So, uh, in the agenda packet uh, online for anyone who's watching and then also emailed out today, we included a summary of their responses, including, um, there is a page of additional comments, one of the kind of questions, so there was some additional thoughts or comments on the zone. See that as available there. I won't. So the first recommendation uh, was to remove the CBD one hundred properties from the South Side form districts. And as you see on the slide, those were in the red color, they're circle purple there. And those are currently CBD one hundred, uh, but the switch to the urban mixed use is proposed would have lowered the height that was allowed on site. Uh, and after taking another look after your discussion, I think we agree that it makes sense to uh, remove those and keep them as currently zoned. We would also suggest doing the same to the block uh, further to the south, which are currently zoned before. Uh, they were going into the residential transition zone, but again, keeping them before to allow more commercial uses as a couple of those things as such. Um, so for each of these, we will have a decision or guidance. We'd like to contribute from you all, how you'd like us to proceed. Um, I don't know how you want to do that, but our first decision is uh, should the CBD one hundred and four properties on the west side of South go uh, be rezoned or be rezoned.
Um, what I will do here is very slowly uh, do a resolution on the fly uh, for the deputy clerk, which is I move to accept the staff recommendation on item one as presented to council. Is there a second? Second about all the person Saint Perez? Discussion, all the person Fabrizio and then Letterman.
Um, could you just um, say which properties those are? Like if there's a landmark?
Richards, right, and?
Oh, it's on that one? Okay. Thanks.
All the person Brown?
Uh, and again, remind me, these are uh, asked from community, right? This is from the survey that was committed, that was uh, given to you from?
This particular one was not. This was um, if you recall, all the person when moved to pull the hotel in the seven eleven out of the new South Side neighborhood. And this is just a, this was, this was the only one of the items covered in the presentation today that was not included in the survey, but it's just a separate staff recommendation on the basis, as Megan said, of its existing commercial character.
Yeah, that means they won't have any input if we vote on this and pass it tonight. Community won't have no input on this.
Well, procedurally, what will happen is that the staff will then, following all of these prospective votes, bring forward another ordinance that will then be subject to public hearing and further. So they'll have, there will actually be ample opportunity for community input. Yeah. Yep. Um, all the person Fabrizio, one final comment.
Does that mean um, that those parcels could in the future be used for housing?
Yes, they could all be used as housing now, so they could continue to be used as such.
So it's housing and commercial or commercial? Okay.
All right. All, yeah, all the person when please.
Just quickly, I, I do remember receiving, I don't know if it was all of council or just me, but definitely remember receiving feedback from both of those plots regarding. So, so there was some community demand for, for keeping them out of the zone.
All those in favor of the ad hoc resolution that has moved? That carries unanimously. Was that sufficiently slow, deputy clerk? Okay, thank you.
So the second recommendation was to eliminate all off-street parking requirements. Um, in the original proposal, there was um, parking required for the traditional residential area, uh, not for the residential, which in next use, uh, and and um, none for medium density next use. So the only one that was going to require parking was that traditional residential area, which is the light yellow. Um, so the recommendation was to remove off-street parking requirements from there as well. Based on the survey, you can see that there was agreement with this from those who responded and staff who recommend that we do remove the off-street parking requirements, we would also say that this should be treated consistently. So our next question for you was, what if we remove the requirements, reduce them, or?
So first, what I will do is I am going to move, I am going to move that council accept the recommendation to remove proposed off-street parking requirements within the South Side form district and recommend that staff move forward with similar recommendations on the comprehensive rewrite citywide. Is there a second? Second about all the person Letterman, discussion. All the person Letterman.
Uh, thank you for coming forward with this. I appreciate the efforts the planning uh, department has made to eliminate uh, off-street parking, which I think is a very poor use of land in our city and hopefully will move us forward. So thank you for that.
All the person Fabrizio.
What do you see as the like practical effect of this? Is there any immediate practical effect or what is the longer term practical effect, effect for that particular neighborhood?
So with the elimination of the off-street parking requirements, um, a property owner could still choose to build housing. Um, it's not saying they can't do that.
Hopefully, they will choose housing though.
Um, so sorry, parking to accompany any new house, they can choose to do so. It's not a maximum. Um, it would just be more based on what they feel their market demand is for parking. Um, in terms of existing um, housing, there are cases where occupancy is limited within a building based on the parking that is required versus what they're able to provide. So houses that or, or apartments that are deficient in parking or did not see. So in some case, I can't tell you in this area without doing a look what that would look like in terms of how many additional, how the, how much the occupancy will increase, but we have seen other areas.
And you would expect to see like driveways turn into ADUs or what's the anticipation?
Obviously, I wouldn't expect a lot of change for existing housing. Uh, I imagine that we will see with any new development, um, less, maybe less parking that was required, but it also all depends on what the property owners' program needs are. So we see lots of developers still want to provide it. We see others.
And do these streets right now, are they like totally full with parking? So if there wasn't a requirement, there would be space, like people aren't going to have to circle around and around the neighborhoods and the blocks to find parking because unfortunately, I wish it meant that people wouldn't use as many cars, but I'm sure that's not going to mean that. So that's what I'm wondering.
I mean, I can't say that they're gonna always be a, a parking space right in front of their home, um, but there, there is ample parking spaces available on the street, particularly when you get outside of the area closest to downtown. However, those areas are also close to our downtown.
Many people come into town and work in town and park on our city streets. And that might be something that um, if we're going to make this change, that that might be something that we need to look at.
It's already in works.
Thank you.
All the person Saint Perez, you're next.
So what is the, how would you describe the, the public transit connectivity of, of South Side as a neighborhood? And I, I would also accept from the, those members of council who work or live in South Side. I just have done neither of those things and I'm, I'm curious.
Uh, so there is bus service that goes through our bike boulevards, go through the South Side. There is a pretty extensive sidewalk network, though there is um, a few blocks, particularly south of the creek that do not have sidewalks. Um, but generally those streets have much lower traffic volume. It is a pretty walkable area, um, and there's connections to get more bus routes other than the fifteen, if you are along, can get to Meadow Street or get to Green Street. Um, there's, so there's, it's a, a pretty accessible area in terms of getting transportation wise.
All right, thank you. I was gonna recognize myself next and just um, afford staff an opportunity to share. Um, what is, I don't know, like National Planning Association best practices around uh, whether or not they should require off-street parking?
Um, we are, it is becoming more common to see uh, no off-street parking requirements and let it be by market demand.
I'm in a faint surprise. Thank you. Any further questions on this item? All the person Brown, please.
No, my question is uh, to, to follow up to that, why is it due to gentrification?
Sorry, can you clarify?
Gentrification have moved many people who are, who've lived in this community for years and years. And so now with this off-street parking, will it give access more to the new people who's coming in?
Well, it makes it easier to build homes. So what it does is it increases density and reduces the relative cost for folks. All those in favor of the second ad hoc resolution has moved? That carries unanimously. Uh, all right, we'll well, we're going to let the staff present the next part and then.
Um, the third recommendation was to increase maximum building height in the urban mixed use, which again, uh, right now is along South Meadow Street from five stories to seven stories. Um, I would say the survey was uh, split uh, on this. Um, and our recommendation at present is to maintain the maximum building height at five stories. We don't want to just allow more. We want to allow more place for people to truly live. Well, it's like, it's a narrow street, traffic volume, speeds in other areas. Uh, we don't have very strong design guidelines, so finding design for this area. So for the time being until there can be additional done on this stories, that's um, this should be long.
All the person Letterman, you recognize?
Um, I am gonna, I don't know, perform the ad hoc resolution, be the?
Very slowly and simply make a verbal resolution so that the deputy clerk doesn't throw a shoe at me, which he's very entitled to do.
Move.
Overly wordy.
That the council recommends that the maximum building height in the urban mixed use zone be increased to seven stories.
Next, is there a second? Second about all the person Keel? I might, I might suggest to the mover and seconder that if this is what they're doing, that they maybe um, change the language from recommend to direct because that it, it just feels like if we're, if we're giving clear guidance.
Okay.
Give clear guidance.
I'll rephrase that to say.
Just, you could just change.
Just change from recommend to direct.
All right, so that's the motion on the table. Um, can I first recognize myself and only just, um, can you uh, please, Megan, just show us uh, the geographies that are affected by this? Because strictly speaking, the motion is not to change what the height designation is for all urban mixed use. It is for the urban mixed use within the South Side form district.
You can see on the map there, the property shown in red with the exception of the sites we just reviewed. Um, so it is along Meadow Street. So it's.
Thank you. Uh, I have all the persons hands sharp and then others.
I'm wondering if the uh, fire department weighed in on this one at all because of aerial access regulations?
Um, we have not discussed this specific recommendation with them. Uh, we did discuss others, but this one we haven't discussed with aerial access. It's certainly something that we see a lot of. I'm sure this can add more with uh, taller structures as well. Um, so but yes, this specific one we haven't said in this area.
All the person Matos is next.
Um, I just wanted to go on record and say that I do not agree with this and I will be voting against this um, resolution.
Uh, next I had all the person when I think.
Yeah, I, I no longer represent Cleveland Ave, but I, you know, from years of doing it, I do know they felt very strongly about just the Cleveland, uh, Cleveland Ave access to South Meadow and their neighborhood in general. So I'm just wondering if there's a, a way to um, I have no issue with the Meadow Court portion or the, where there's a pharmacy currently. I think those are completely appropriate. Cleveland Ave might be more. Um, so I'd, I'd like to keep the five and not the seven, but not necessarily do residential transition. Um, so I'm going to stew over that for a second. Thanks.
All the person Saint Perez?
Um, yeah, I.
Sorry, all the person Saint Perez, and that was me verbally, uh, in, non-verbally recognizing that you're on the list.
Sorry. Um, I guess I'm curious, uh, what factors outside of, uh, outside of community input uh, went into the recommendation uh, as to five versus seven?
So, a couple of things. Uh, the road conditions along Meadow Street. The sidewalks are narrow, need to be expanded. If you're going to do a taller building, you probably want to set it further back from the street um, than what we had originally intended here. There's also, we, you know, the design of the building has a lot to do with its impacts on this. And right now, this area does not have strong design guidelines or site name review. But we'd love to see redevelopment in these areas. There's not yet. There's a lot of people who may get that between the height, the difference in height alone, but also the impact of shade on these properties from having such a tall structure, smaller structure uh, changes, has a lot of impacts on their quality of life as well. This is not to say that this isn't something we would consider uh, changing. It's just, uh, you know, it's a balance of trying to get the right answer, um, but also trying to move this forward. So that was what led to our recommendation.
Thank you.
No, I think you, I mean, I think it is important to think about the shading, as Megan said, this is a west, this would be a west facing, so all the houses, smaller houses behind seven story buildings, shade, deep shade, that, you know, that's.
A lot of mosquitoes.
Sorry.
Mosquitoes.
Mosquitoes. But um, again, I think we can see like on Meadows, on North Meadow Street, the side, the width of the sidewalk. We want to push. Just to make it feel like a place that people.
So I guess my question is, would it make more sense to think about these properties as part of the, like if we are going to think about that as part of a Meadow Street corridor project rather than right now during the South Side uh, form zoning?
So it certainly makes a lot of sense to consider the corridors as a whole. I mean, one of the tough things about these boundaries is as you're doing neighborhood plan, you have to draw this boundary somewhere, but it certainly, those edges are very blurry and in this case, very simple. On the flip side, we do know that the uses that are currently about in these areas are. so the five stories, some of the area requirements reflect what's allowed now with, with increases to lock cover, genuine parking, but really take into the, the use that we want, that the neighborhood wants to have. So in terms of, like, waiting to look at it as part of the corridor, I would say we don't think we wanna do that, but it should absolutely in the future be considered as part of, part of the entire.
Understood. Thank you.
Next is Alderperson Fabrizio.
I'm also going to be voting against this. I think that there wasn't enough input. You know, I don't think that, what was the number? Fifty-five, sixty-six surveys that were collected? I think this is a really big visual change and it's not just about the shade. I totally agree with all the things that you both said, but it's not just about the shade, it's also about the heat. It's about, you know, all the heat emanating from the buildings. It's about not being able to put, put buildings back enough that we can actually plant trees. I mean, you do wanna make housing, but you also really wanna make housing that people do wanna live in. And I don't, I don't think that this would be that kind of housing. And I also don't think that we could be, I don't think we should be voting on this period just because the fire department hasn't weighed in, and I think that's really significant. So I will definitely be voting against this. I did have one question, and that's about the park, parking requirements, when you're envisioning parking requirements for housing development along-
That's not germane to the current item. Yeah. Cause we've already voted on the parking question.
So, well, just point of information then.
That we, we can talk off, that we, we're gonna dispense with the motion at hand first, and then I can entertain a question before we move on to the next item. Alderperson Keel and then Letterman.
Yeah, I strongly agree with this movement by Mr. Letterman. I think that if we wanna see housing increase in Ithaca, we have to do housing increases in Ithaca. I have talked to multiple developers as I've been working through, when I worked through the South Side changes last time, who were pretty adamant, and I think we've seen this with their current, am I correct in, what's, what's the current height regulation? Five. So it's staying at five. Am I correct about that?
It's staying at five, but there are other changes.
Yeah. Who, the, who have said point blank that the reason there hasn't been increased development in the corridor along 13 is because there's just not enough capacity to be able to make it financially worth it. And I don't always agree with that argument, but in this circumstance, I think I do. I think that there needs to be increased development along the 13 corridor. I think we have the opportunity to do it now. I think it increases the availability of housing. I also, frankly, I know that there's concerns about, I know there's concerns about the impact on the inner community, but I also think that another side of the coin, which we're not really taking into consideration, is the way that that might protect the community. Right now, there's not buildings. You can see how much of an impact the old building that was there before the car wash had on the neighborhood behind it across the river when there was a noise blocking effect from both 13, or from 13. And currently, those barriers don't exist, and I think this would, would add those barriers and actually create a more inclusive community that is a little bit closer to the city. I also just wanna reiterate the point about housing, though. I mean, I think that if, if we have the opportunity to increase density and increase size in Ithaca, I think we should. I think that's a key part of it. It's not a situation where people are gonna be wanting to live on the ground floor of that building or probably even the second floor of that building anyways. Because of the road traffic from 13, the only really viable housing units that, that can, in my opinion, be used in those buildings would be up in the higher floors. And if we want that, then, then we need to do it. I also did wanna ask about floodplain requirements. And for a five-story building, how many of the bottom floors, and I just know, seeing this from the buildings that are going up on the waterfront, what, how does the number of stories impact the overall height? And what does that look like in terms of raising the building up and putting parking underneath and stuff like that?
So one of the reasons why I've proposed the height and feet requirement in this district is because of the floodplain. It's gonna help reduce the impact on a lot of these. So, but by starting it is drive, is having the stories only as opposed to feet. It will count the number of stories, but if you have to build up four or five, because of floodplain, you're essentially thinking a lot for that. The parking question will depend on how it's designed in terms of whether it comes as a story. But there's, it's hard to tell. There's so much variation from site to design. But we did know that it's throughout the entire planning area.
Yeah, I think that my, my kind of middle ground for this, I also totally understand the, the point of view that we don't wanna just be building monoliths in Ithaca and taking up every, like, it, we wanna make sure that people have housing that they wanna be in. And so I guess the, the kind of compromise point that I would, would set on this, that I do think it makes sense that when, if we pass this tonight, that when staff comes back with the final version, there's increased setbacks for those buildings so that there mixers, there's room for, for pedestrians and also just livability in those areas. I, I think if you're increasing stories, you're still increasing overall capacity of housing, even if you're setting it back a little bit more. Or, you know, there's, there's back setbacks too. Maybe that's the answer. I don't know. We can ask the, the actual planners, but I'm gonna be voting for this. I think seven stories is appropriate in that area and I think it's good for the community.
Alderperson Letterman, you're next.
I guess I was curious, Alderperson Nguyen, were you thinking about changing it so it doesn't apply to the blocks directly around Cleveland Ave or?
I appreciate that. That is your question, and if Alderperson Nguyen wishes to respond, I will add him to the list.
Okay.
Anything, anything further on you?
I, I think, just in terms of talking about the areas around 13, you know, there isn't a ton of housing that directly abuts 13, and I think a lot of it's just sort of more industrial right now. And if we can, what will make the area more livable and walkable is if we have more people who, who live there. And again, I was just like looking at the map of like what portion of these, like just from a satellite view, are just parking lots, and it's like, you know, it's thirty percent or something of the area that abuts, you know, that part of Meadow Street. And, uh, yeah, I don't know. I think more housing will be helpful. And I think if we can change the sort of economics of it so it's viable to build more housing, I think that would be great, and that's the hope here.
So I have a lot of repeat hands now, so I'm gonna recognize myself first and then I'll go to the repeat hands, which is to say, I agree with the folks who have stated that they believe that Route 13's corridor should be a sort of higher area. That being said, it's clear that a near majority, about fifty percent of the folks in South Side, do not want these four blocks upzoned. And so what I intend to do to address this is, as we alluded to earlier, there's gonna be a resolution that kind of comes before council to provide general principles on the types of citywide zoning revisions that we wanna see. And one of the things that I'd like to include in there is seeing instructions for staff to optimize density and verticality in our, bless you, in our sort of urban core areas that are most conducive to this. And I think a comprehensive evaluation of 13 as a corridor makes sense to do that. I don't think that these four parcels are make or break. I also know that, I have also had conversations with some, with some developers, and I know that while the verticality piece is important, the floodplain piece and the building costs at the moment are, are interrelated. And so I think that from where I sit, based on both the community feedback and in understanding that a comprehensive citywide rewrite will be before council within a year, I think I'm gonna not support this motion, though I do support, again, an upzoning of 13 overall. Next on my list was my first repeat hand, which was Alderperson St. Perez, then Alderperson Matos, then Alderperson Nguyen, and then Alderperson Keel.
Yeah, I, I also think just time, engagement, et cetera, is a relevant factor here. I also agree that the 13 corridor should be, should be looked at and expanded and grown. At the same time, if, if we want, if, if we truly want to push that forward right now over these properties, possibly over the objections of the community, that is gonna be, among other things, an incredibly time-intensive proposal. And I do not feel comfortable putting the other things within South Side zoning behind schedule on account of attempting to do this now.
Alderperson Matos?
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for your, your words that you just shared. And yes, so I, and thank you for pointing out that fifty percent of those who took the survey did not agree with this. Also, I would like to say that, though I understand that there is a possibility for housing to be built along North Meadow, I mean, looking at the geographics, looking at how close the sidewalks are, where the streets are located, how unsafe it really realistically is to cross that, those streets, I highly doubt developers are gonna go down that route. And in fact, I have talked to a developer who, who I know, who has also shared their thoughts on the South Side zoning plan about a property that would be considered the urban mixed use. And he absolutely told me he wouldn't build a multi-unit. He wouldn't build, he wouldn't build there. He said that he doesn't feel like that is a proper place for families to be. The noise is there. There's not much green space for children to play in. So I, I've also heard from developers that, that, that area does not interest them in building homes. And so I think if we wanna focus on how do we get more folks into the city and how do we densify the cities, I think there's other places within South Side neighborhood we can look at in other areas within the city that we can be strategic about.
Alderperson Nguyen? If you would like to reserve your comments to address your colleagues who's no longer in the room, I can bump you further down the list.
Yes, please.
Alderperson Keel?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to reiterate that I think that the opportunity to start doing this now is now. And I get that, you know, there may be some developers who wouldn't build there because of, like, personal preference. But I mean, I've talked to developers who are interested in building there and the financials don't work out. So from my perspective, we have an opportunity to increase housing in our city by passing this and allowing people to build there. And we also have an opportunity to not allow that and wait. Mr. Mayor, you said under a year, but I thought the, the timeline was eighteen to twenty-four months. So, or we can wait two plus years for, for things to get redone on this, on the corridor. I mean, I think everyone here knows my hatred of 13. I think it was the worst planning decision that the city has ever made. And, uh, yeah, again, I'll be voting for this.
Alderperson Nguyen?
I think it was mostly the state's fault. I think that was mostly the state's fault. It was the state that I went. To answer Clyde's question, no, I, I think it's simple. It's just I'm gonna vote no against this. It's not fair to the staff. I, I had plenty of opportunity to come up with a different scheme and I didn't. So simplest thing to do, I think, is to, is to oppose this and, and like the mayor said, address this more comprehensively down the corridor. I, like, the smallest disagreement I would have with Kayla is that my vision for 13, for the two Meadow, sorry, Meadow and Fulton, so one day make them more friendly to families and better integrated into the city. Unfortunately, and we, we are working on that with the state, with NISEDA, you know, north of purity. And, you know, one day we're gonna do it for the rest of, of 13 as well. And it is, you know, there is a class of housing that is feasible, and unfortunately, right now it's only subsidized affordable housing. So I do have West End Heights and Meadow and Seneca, or is it Seneca and Meadow? I always forget what it's called. It's coming. They're both five-story buildings. It is feasible. Market rate is not feasible, probably. But I think that we are still nonetheless, with the other changes that are happening to these zones, may make it a little easier. So, um, sorry, Clyde. You'll have to watch the tape, I guess.
Alderperson Brown, did you have a hand?
Okay. I'm voting against it cause Kayla is, no, I'm just playing. What I'm doing is sitting here and when I'm visioning that everywhere I go throughout, when I'm traveling, it's always a route like that, that, that where the businesses, the, the car dealerships, the TJ Maxx's and all those kinda stuff is on that route, right? And anywhere I've gone, I don't really see much housing, right, on that strip. And, and, and that's what made me think about it. When you talk about the people living on that strip, you know, kids, there's not much street, there's not much trees, there's not much, you know. So that part I thought about quite much. And I, and I also thought about creating, and that creating housing. The part that that two more floors will create more housing, right? And I find that to be ingenuine because when I think of those other places that I go through and I see the housing that they build around that area, they're usually market values. They're usually not gonna, the people that we are hoping housing, get housing affordability cannot afford that. And I, I don't, and I, and I, and I think about the market value places that we have right here in Tompkins County, right here in City of Ithaca, that do not, do not help our people that we're, that we're fighting for more homes. So, so that, I'll be voting no.
All right, with that, I will go ahead and move this resolution to a vote. All those in favor of the resolution as moved by Alderperson Letterman and those opposed. And the motion fails three to seven with Alderpersons Kumar, Keel, and Letterman in favor for the clerk's benefit. Megan, the floor is yours. Alderperson St. Perez?
Do we need to now pass a resolution to accept the staff recommendation? Cause that's what we've been doing for prior ones.
Strictly speaking, if this, if this council doesn't vote on anything, there would be no change to the original instantiation of that plan, which is the staff recommendation. So in this case, no, we don't need to. The existing plan as proposed by staff is what they're recommending, correct? And so that, so without any affirmative vote of council, that would just continue to be what they recommend in the ordinance.
And that differs from the prior two resolutions that we-
That's correct, because staff recommended previously that we change what they had brought forward.
That clarifies a lot. Again, thank you.
And that's a really good point for the public as well, wondering why we may not be voting on something. Sorry, Megan, please. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Before you move on, very quickly, Alderperson, you had a question about a previous item about parking. So I just wanna give you a few moments to articulate that question. And if it's a longer conversation, maybe respectfully, we could move that to an email conversation. But just, you did have a question that was not germane to the vote at hand, but is there a-
About parking on Route 13?
Yes.
Yeah. So these, these buildings, because of the floodplain requirements, would already be an extra four feet above the ground and then five feet, so they're like five and a half feet. And you were potentially envisioning, like, parking below. I guess that's part of what I was thinking is, I mean, just thank you, Kayla, for your comments because I really echo those. I just don't feel like this corridor is a livable, desirable sort of place for children, for people to open their windows for heat, for noise and all that stuff. But parking, where would the parking be if there was housing along there? It would all be under the, under the buildings.
Necessarily. There's still the possibility of having-
Parking lot? So we'd still have a parking lot? Yeah. And, and are, are we, like, in these reworkings of this, would we be greening the corridor in any way? Like, is there space for trees? I mean, cause that's-
Well, so just remember, we're not talking about Route 13 as a corridor. We're just talking about those four parcels that abut the South Side district, which like, again, like, very important conversation, more perhaps relevant for that broader, cause I don't disagree, but that was the same reason I was hesitant to do this, just for those four parcels. Also, just in the interest of us moving a little bit forward. Now, Megan, sorry, floor is, your floor is yours.
The next recommendation was to remove the pitched roof requirement. This, I would say, had the most opinions from the survey. I think we do recommend keeping the pitched roof requirement simply because that was one of the key ideas of the neighborhood plan was that the architectural floor would- was that the architectural form would be similar. It's not to say that there couldn't be any more, that there couldn't be more housing, but that it would look like it was part of the neighborhood. So the neighborhood was supportive of not requiring single or two-family dwellings. That maintained that that would feel that the neighborhood residence was not special. So two of the things that are architectural form elements that most buildings in Southside share is the pitched roof and the front porch or soup. So those were two architectural features that were built. We didn't go much beyond that.
Alder Person Keel, you recognize?
I'm going to, I, do I need to say I resolve or I move, which should be better?
You can move a resolution.
Okay, I move a resolution that council removes the pitched roof requirement from the Southside Form District as previously recommended.
Is there a second? Second, Alder Person Kumar. Alder Person Keel, recognized?
I would just like to reiterate the points that we talked through at the last meeting. I think that one of the things that I've heard loud and clear as I've talked to people about increasing costs and the inability to densify the City of Ithaca is that we have just a whole host of, a whole host of requirements that are not necessarily in line with any actual standards. And I understand that there are a lot of pitched roofs in that area, but that also doesn't mean that there's no flat roofs. There are flat roofs in that area, I walked through there in preparation for this meeting. And I just don't think that requiring this is a necessary feature. I think that there are things we can do if we want to limit architectural options, even though I don't agree with that, that don't continually add extra requirements to people trying to build additional housing in the City of Ithaca. So I will be voting to remove the pitched roof requirement from the Southside Form Districts as previously recommended.
Alder Person Fabrizio?
Well, also, just like the last comment, 53% disagree about this. And I think that's, I think that's really significant. And my same comment holds in that I still don't think we have a really representative group. This thing about densifying the city, like many, many, many people here believe we are really dense. Like, we don't have huge lot sizes. We're pretty dense and I understand what you're all trying to do. But it's, the city can't solve the whole county's housing shortage. That's just the reality. And I think we need to be really careful about the quality of housing that we want to make in our rush to make more housing. So I will be voting against this. And I think we need to listen to the neighborhood. And I'm sure that there would be a lot more support for that if more people had been engaged in this process. People like certain characteristics of neighborhoods, this is one of them. And I think we need to respect that.
Alder Person Matos, you're recognized?
Yes, I agree with Alder Person Fabrizio. I think that the fact that this, the pitched roofs have shown up in two different plans, there's a 53% disagreement. I'm going to go with my community and my, that I represent on this one. So this does not have my support.
For my, any of my, any of my fan club members out there, mark the time, 7:13. I'm very capable of admitting when I'm wrong. And I was wrong when I said that my building didn't have pitched roofs. I went home that night and saw it. And I have a multi-story condo building that I live in that has pitched roofs and they made that work. So I don't remember how I voted on this previously, but I know that I'll be voting in support of what my neighbors want, which is to keep this requirement.
Alder Person Letterman?
I'm a little disappointed that we didn't survey people about inverted roofs and whether or not they'd like those. But no, again, I don't feel very strongly about this. I mean, I think if that's what the neighborhood wants to keep the pitched roof requirement, that makes sense. I also will say, just in order to the survey data, like, I probably should not do mental math on the fly. It's 29 people is the difference? Well, no, what's the difference between 35 and 53%? It's eight people, so. Again, while I'm informed by the survey data, it also is a very small sample that I'm not sure is representative of what folks in the neighborhood feel. But since the representatives in the neighborhood are opposed to it, I can understand keeping the pitched roofs.
Alder Person Brown, and then Alder Person Kumar? Alder Person Kumar, and then Alder Person Brown?
Well, I just wanted to echo Alder Person Letterman's point in that I'm a little bit skeptical about the results of the survey just because, first of all, it did have such low participation. But second of all, you know, just because of participation bias, people who feel strongly about this are probably more likely to answer. And I don't think it should be lost on us that removing a pitched roof requirement, you know, progressive housing policy movements such as this that are focused on building more housing primarily are going to help and serve, you know, working and middle-class communities. People who might historically be less engaged in the political process, have less time to be involved and put their input in. And personally, in my experience knocking doors and going around Southside over the past couple of years, I've found that the people who are more engaged in political processes often do fall into the demographics that end up being a minority of the actual demographics of the community.
Alder Person Brown? And I might take a page out of my colleague's book and make a joke of, it sounds like a lot of people know how they're voting. We could all tell each other that by just actually voting, but-
That's true.
Alder Person Brown, please.
No, I was just, I hear a lot of people, well, I hear others pretty much saying the survey doesn't really represent. I think when I read this today, I was pretty excited to see that many people even involved themselves in the survey. You know, I'm not real sure of the demographic who did the, because it didn't tell you that. Who, but yeah, I was pretty glad about it, so thanks. I want to thank the community for getting involved and doing the survey.
San Perez, and then Matos, and then a vote.
While we do have our planning staff here, I would like to ask, as the pitched roof requirement, how many years in process has this been? And how much engagement on this question have you had over the, closer to a decade?
Many children that the mayor have at the time.
So the, I mean, the Southside planning process started in 20, well, resumed in 2017. The plan was adopted in 2019 and then now we're focusing on the zoning. You know, so there was, I'm not going to say that it was specific to this exact requirement, but the idea behind it that we articulated was, has been a part of the discussion since then. And I do understand the hesitation to have form requirements. Our advocacy of it is solely based on too the fact that this was a requirement of the, or a desire of the neighborhood, not just of the survey, but through the planning process, which did engage a lot of-
Thank you. Alder Person Matos?
Thank you to the other persons that shared the point about the density. I totally understand that and I get that and I do think that. My personal opinion is that we have, we literally are, just got a presentation on a full-on zoning rewrite. And instead of piloting it in a specific neighborhood, I think we, once again, create the resolution that gives the directions on which way we would like to see the consulting team and the staff go. So that way, if we were talking about densifying, we're talking about densifying the whole city instead of a specific neighborhood. And additionally, once again, I know that there are, there may be developers who are excited about developing in the Southside neighborhood. But personally, between myself and Ms. Phoebe, please like, you know, validate this. I've only had a handful of developers reach out to me saying that they're excited and they want to bring a project to my ward. So Patrick, I encourage whatever developers that you're talking to about developing within Ward One to reach out to me because I'm interested in the projects that they would like to bring forward.
Briefly, and then I'm not going to recognize any more hands.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to do that. I think it's been more in the conversation of how do you feel about this as a requirement? Specifically for the parcels along 13, those came up specifically. But in terms of pitched roof requirements and stuff like that, I think it's a more general trend of city policy and wasn't specific about the Southside Form Districts. However, there were some people, including residents who I talked to, who disagree that and came to our meeting. And also, I, again, just want to hammer home a point that Mr. Letterman brought up that I really don't think they, I, you know, it sounds like that we're not going to approve this recommendation from common council. And I do just want to point out that the low service rate. And also, some of the comments that were brought up in the survey that were not reported, such as staff should be listening to the elected representatives of the community, not dragging their feet and wasting their time with tax dollars, creating a push-pull to try and undercut the direction of council and the mayor. So like, I think there is both sides of this coin. And I just think that we need to be moving on these things and increasing density because that sounds like what we all want to do and not increasing barriers to build new development in the city, which I feel like is what we all say we're on board with. And then the times come to vote on them and then we're not on board with them. So I'm excited for the comprehensive zoning reform. I think that's going to change a lot of important things in the city. And yeah, let's vote on it.
I feel obligated to point out that just as that is a very valid reporting of a piece of feedback that we received, we also received feedback from at least one respondent that urged council to not rewrite the plan that the community had already worked on. So again, just echoing Alder Person's point that there were many perspectives. And I think that reflects the mixed perspectives at the table as well. All those in favor of this resolution as moved, which is to eliminate the peak roofs requirement? Those opposed? That fails two to eight with Alder Persons Kumar and Keel in support. Megan, please.
Okay, the last one was to remove minimum lot sizes. Again, I just want to clarify that per how our zoning is written, that is minimum lot area and lot width at street. This one was fairly split on the survey. And so we recommend reducing from what was originally proposed. And we went back and looked at these numbers and then this would bring compliance with these numbers between 95 to 100% compliance, depending on the district. But I would just want to note, this is the one where we spoke to the fire department and the building division. There is a lot of concerns present of just saying they want to eliminate it without looking at what that would mean for fire and emergency response access and other life safety issues. I'll say that a lot of times zoning is the first place people will look when they're considering purchasing a property or a development. And they often expect that if it can be built under zoning, that it won't conflict with fire or state building code. Staff is certainly not opposed to looking at this as one of those key issues that we've identified going forward. But we want to look at to see how we could do it to meet all of the needs. And again, this, this will bring it so there are very limited number of lots that would not comply with the new proposal.
Thank you, we need a motion before we can begin. Alder Person Keel?
I move the resolution that we remove minimum lot sizes and accept the previous recommendation of common council and direct staff to remove the minimum lot sizes and accept the previous recommendation of common council.
Is there a second? Second, Alder Person Matos? Recognize myself first, which is, I want to just make sure that I'm clear. The staff recommendation to reduce but not eliminate is to ensure redundancy with fire and building code? Because those, as I think I heard you state, those would sort of like supersede, I mean, they would, people wouldn't be able to build something that wasn't compliant with fire and building safety requirements.
That's correct. They do not have a set lot size, for example. The width in street is a very big issue for emergency access in particular. The, and I got into a lot of specifics, but you know, a lot of the areas where we don't see minimum lot sizes are a different type of construction, are also more expensive type of construction. You're looking at fully sprinklered buildings with fire-rated walls and that kind of thing. So those are not what we're seeing as existing buildings in the Southside, nor is it really what is intended in several of the districts as the type of construction is intended. So I can get more details if you want from building and fire, but they were in strong support of keeping lot size until we could determine how other communities have dealt with, in New York, have dealt with it in terms of those codes.
I am not trying to be obtuse, I apologize. Are these things not governed by state building code and state fire code?
So access is required, governed. But there's like a recommended approach, which might be that you have with street frontage. But if you don't, you're going to have to build a fire access lane. And there has to be certain access and there's exceptions, but they're very, they're expensive to build in to meet the exception to the fire code. And so there, it's more complicated is, I guess, what we were trying to say in terms of ensuring that they have what they need, property owner could build it in there. So again, it's kind of our thought for now, until we can do more research on this area, is to make it so we can bring as many of the lots into compliance as possible, but still maintain particularly that width in street. And one of the things that this proposal does is it's the same lot width for any use. The previous said is, you know, single, two-family had one width, then more denser uses had a wider width. Their reaction to that was that the more, the denser the site, the more room they need to fight the fire or provide access. But this is a compromise solution until we can figure out through, again, either a future amendment or the comprehensive zoning rewrite, how we could achieve what you're looking for, but still meeting safety.
Thank you. I have Keel, hands sharp, Letterman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I strongly think that we should, I've been saying strongly a lot tonight, but I strongly think that we should be removing all minimum lot sizes, both in the Southside Form District as well across the city. Unlike the pitched roof requirement and unlike those parcels on 13, this is national zoning best practices. This is cited by the Biden administration as increasingly pro-housing. There is direct research ties to minimum lot sizes as exclusionary and racially discriminatory this across the country, this is well-established. I think that we need to stand on what we're saying. I think we need to remove these now and remove them, continue to remove them as we move forward with our zoning rewrite. I'm just pulling up the quote from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development under the Biden administration on this so that I can quote it effectively. But I also, this is the residents in the district, for everybody who said we need to be listening to residents, the residents agree in support of this to removing minimum lot sizes. So I think this one's pretty cut and dry for me.
Thank you. For me, I strongly feel like I am not willing to vote for something like this with not hearing from the people who would be impacted, like the fire department and the planning. So for me to make a decision like this, to support in light of the fact that it didn't even sound, am I correct, that we could do this and it would feel good, maybe, but nothing could be built? Given that the New York State Residential Building or Fire Code wouldn't allow it? Am I correct with that?
It doesn't mean that nothing could be built, but there-
Yeah, go ahead.
It would depend on the site. And if you start, you know, we have some really deep lots. If we start subdividing the basins off, so they don't have a lot access, probably-
So to fulfill what we would let, you know, sensibly be saying by eliminating minimum lot size requirements, right? For that to actually manifest in additional housing and deep, maybe it would not be able to be built in that situation. I don't know if I'm, yeah. So it'd be very expensive, it'd be very expensive.
It could be, and there's, again, we don't- And there's, again, we don't want to say that we're not willing to consider this in the future. We would just like to see what has been done elsewhere in New York to meet our state code requirements. So I just want to be clear on that. It's not that we're saying we want to keep high lot sizes, it's that we want to do it correctly and not create a situation that is going to conflict, that isn't in the needs of our first responders, who are already facing shortages themselves and has impacts on what they need to do with their jobs.
Mr. Letterman, you're next.
I guess my question with this lot size thing, and again, my preference, generally speaking, is that we not have minimum lot sizes, as I voted last time, but wouldn't any of these fire code compliance issues just be dealt with in site plan review before the planning board? Or am I mistaken?
It could, but as Megan concluded to the beginning, there wouldn't be any, we wouldn't have any ability to move minimum lot sizes. We couldn't prevent people from creating lots that weren't... So it would be too late at the site plan and review phase to correct any of those deficiencies. I mean, again, I think what Megan is saying is, like, the recommendation is to spend more time understanding how this could apply to what takes outside of the project, to give it the floor to discuss.
And I appreciate that answer, and that makes sense to me. I guess it just seems there's, there was a sort of suggestion, not by the planning department, but just that we might be building buildings that were not in compliance with fire code, but it just seems as though the concern is that we may divide land such that it's not possible to build them because of fire code, not that we would build things that were not in compliance. So I have that right? Okay, all right, but thank you for your explanation there.
Ms. Matos?
Patrick, just wondering if you can share with me any like articles that you have on some information, that would be great. I am on the fence about this, because I do appreciate what all the person Keel said. However, I do appreciate that staff has acknowledged that they need more time to do further research, just to make sure that they're doing their due diligence and proposing a plan that actually works for our community. And because of that, I will more than likely be voting against this, right, against this one? Yes, though I did second it. I can do that right?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, cool. Just wanted to make sure.
Parliamentary police aren't going to come after you. All the person's same press.
So about... Am I hearing correctly? And that to remove minimum lot sizes effectively might take more infrastructure, like more fire infrastructure, for example? I guess I'm just trying to imagine what, looking forward, this might look like.
Could, that's what we want to look into. That's exactly it, is we don't want to put the fire department where they really can't adequately respond to properties, given your staffing and equipment law. So I mean, yes, there is growing best practice to reduce or eliminate minimum lot size. We just want to make sure that the approach that we take in doing so, while like best planning practice, we need to make sure it works for other needs.
That makes sense. You know, this feels like something that will take more time to do right, and as previously noted, we started this process in 2017. I was in high school. The, I think, especially as we move into the comprehensive zoning process that we're now going into, this leftover piece is getting more and more anachronistic. I'd rather we address it sooner than later, and I believe this would distract from that and to make it take significantly longer for minimal impact.
All the person for Britio?
I totally support being like fully informed about safety issues, obviously. I think it would be completely irresponsible of us to like just charge into doing that without that information. So I don't even know why this is really being debated. To me, it seems so obvious. I also want to say, I'm not against minimum lot sizes. I don't think they're evil. Trees, gardens, kids, dogs, extreme heat, flooding, those are all reasons that we need to have more green space around our buildings and in our neighborhoods, especially if we want to make them livable and, you know, help us deal with all of the extreme changes that we've seen in so many, in just these very recent years with regard to heat and climate change here. So I am not in support of throwing out minimum hot size, lot sizes, and again, I just want to say, we cannot build, we cannot build all the housing that the county needs, and we are a dense city. Many, many people here think we're super dense, like you open your window, when I was living in Fall Creek, you know, and my house had a little more space on each side than most of the houses do. We are super, super tight in so many, so many places in the city, so, yeah.
All the person win?
Yeah, I'm on the fence about this. So I'm traditionally opposed to minimum lot sizes, and I would also recommend getting rid of the minimum lot width as well. I do see it's a little more nuanced, that Buffalo's Green Code and Minneapolis's code still has some, for certain building types, still has them, and so I take staff's point that research may be warranted. So if this fails, I'm going to take a cue from the mayor and draft a resolution directing staff to investigate the elimination or dramatic reduction of minimum lot area and width throughout the city in the comprehensive zoning rewrite.
Great, I had myself next, and I don't know how to, no, I don't know how to articulate what I want to say yet, so go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate the point that Mr. Letterman brought up about the fire and building codes, because I think that, I don't understand why would we would limit the process? Like, if you think about a large lot that would possibly be able to get subdivided because there's no minimum lot sizes, that parcel, if it's no longer acceptable, the new parcel, wouldn't be able to be built on anyways with minimum lot sizes. And so I don't know why we would limit the ability for people to design and build structures when it's going to have to go to site plan review anyways. We don't need to preemptively prevent people from being able to build things. We have an entire design review process, which is one of my problems with us implementing form-based zoning on top of a site plan review process to begin with. I, again, think this is best practice. I just sent Kayla some articles, and I really hope that we remove these, remove these tonight.
Mr. Letterman?
Would either of the staff here mind sharing with us the process for lot subdivision? And how that works, right? Because we're detailing something that would necessarily require first that lot subdivision occurred?
The Planning and Development Board approves subdivision. And so if somebody wants to subdivide a lot, they hire a surveyor to subdivide it in such a way that it's compliant. And usually we ask, they are asked to build one based on those, and then if it's a compliant law, it has no basis to...
I would add, too, that we do get variants across to the BCA for lot width and lot area. And, for example, I'm thinking of one on West Hill we got that had, didn't have any lot width, but they were able to demonstrate that they had an acceptable means of emergency response access from the fire department, which they submitted that as part of their application, and that was, so it was, again, just checking to make sure that that met all of the needs for the site. And I honestly can say that if that's the case, we have not seen, I have not seen a lot width not be able to meet the needs of the response.
Thank you, Lisa and Megan. I guess that's just my sense here, is we're not going to have any, the concern is not building unsafe buildings, right, but it's building, it's building buildings on lots, or not being able to build buildings on lots, because the lots wouldn't, would be too small, but we can't, as far as I, if I understand you correctly, bill, we can't even subdivide lots that would not be buildable, because the subdivision of those lots would first need to go through a review process by the planning board that would ensure that they meet the relevant requirements for access.
Somebody subdivides a lot, often they don't have a plan for it. So the lot itself, so often there's no development plan.
Okay.
So there would, again, there would be no, any lot in it, not that, suggesting, you know, we're going to have a stampede of people submitting subdivision proposals for tiny lots, but no lot, every lot would be compliant and under this.
Okay, thank you.
All the person's same press.
Are you sure? Have you figured out how you want to? Nope. Okay. I do hear what my colleagues here are saying about us having safeguards in place. When first elected, I decided to try to read the entire city code. It was a mistake. But the real point I'm trying to get at is, you know, sometimes government really does have to be idiot-proof, and I prefer to put more stuff upfront and with more clarity. I hope that communicated the idea effectively.
I'm not, respectfully, I'm not entirely sure that it did. I did not.
Okay, okay, okay. Let me, let me, let me try to convey this better. Yeah, you know what? People aren't going to be most, like, people might go through subdivisions that might lead to negative outcomes. That is possible. The way I see it, a zoning code is supposed to provide a set of clear guidelines for members of the community on what makes sense, not just what they are allowed to do. Right? And what I'm hearing is that there are degrees of abolishing minimum lot sizes, which allow for, allow for development and allow for growth in a way that is, I mean, not even growth, the lack of growth, right? It allows you to do stuff that then there are further safeguards that interact with badly in order to protect the community. The way I see it, it is better for us to straight-up frontline, make sure that what we have as our zoning code is aligned with our fire safety needs, is aligned with all those other needs. I'm not saying there aren't further safeguards, there are, and I'm grateful that there are. It's important that there are. I'd prefer to get that out front, if at all possible.
I'll recognize myself. I think we, you know, several colleagues have hit around where I'm experiencing some confusion, because I hear the all-the-person's point. I think I'm more like all-the-person Letterman, where, like, building redundancy into parts of the code works until something at the state level changes, and then we are in this unenviable position of having local legislation with all of the sort of organizational bandwidth constraints and political capital constraints that accompany changing those things, to bring them yet again into compliance with the state. I'm loathe, I'm loathe to go against the staff, the staff recommendation here. I just, I, I, I'm struggling to see if there are building code and fire code sort of safety parameters that already exist. I'm just, I'm struggling to see how preserving the minimum lot size and width pieces, and I think of our friend Nolan, right? Like, this is like not the scalpel solution to those issues. It controls density in a way that feels additive to what those safety protocols are, not complementary. And I think while I'm continuing to sort through how I'm going to vote on this, I do agree with all-the-person-win, irrespective of how this vote goes, I would very much like to see us provide a comprehensive citywide look at what our minimum lot size requirements are, because I don't think that... Colleagues, I am going to vote against this on the sole basis of support for all-the-person-wins' point. We should not have these. And I mentioned at our previous meeting, now that I've had time to think about it, that I'm very fearful that eliminating it in a single neighborhood will create this sort of fractionalization problem, where certain neighborhoods may agitate for minimum lot requirements and others will not. And it is my strong preference to eliminate these citywide. So I think that while I am very sympathetic to the argument that all-the-person Keel outlined in his initial motion, and I think my colleagues can see sort of my grappling with this issue, I think I'm going to support the citywide solution over the neighborhood-specific solution. And I'll recognize Mr. Keel.
With that, and I recognize that point, and I will just note that we've done this with other things we've already passed tonight, I would like to amend my resolution to...
Just slowly for the deputy clerk, please.
Absolutely. The amended version is I move that we direct city staff to remove minimum lot sizes from the South Side zoning plan, and direct city staff to remove minimum lot sizes while undergoing the comprehensive zoning rewrite.
Is that friendly to the seconder? Actually, that's a correction, that's a substantive change. Is there a second? Seconded by all-the-person Kumar. Amending, debate on amending the amendment. All-the-person Keel?
Yeah, I just, I think we have to stand on business. Like, we say we want zoning reform, this is the opportunity for us to be doing zoning reform. It is before us today. We have the opportunity to direct city staff to remove something that is best practices to do. I've heard, Mr. Mayor, I've heard you talk about this numerous times, and I think, I would be surprised if this topic didn't come up in your housing roundtable that you had the other, the other week. This is an opportunity for stand on business. This amendment substantially changes it so that we direct city staff to do this in the end anyways. And I, with this amendment, I can't see how those who are in favor of removing zoning reforms wholesale, because they're bad practices, would not support this.
What'd you say? You mean, you said zoning reforms are bad practices. I presume the all-the-person meant minimum lot sizes.
Yes, that is, that is what I meant.
Can I just take the chair prerogative for a second, colleagues, to just ask staff, what would the, what impact will that have on bringing forward an ordinance for vote and consideration, consideration and vote, presumably in that order?
Are you proposing as part of the South Side, when it comes back in a couple months, it be eliminated by then, or that for all of the entire city as part of this?
The all-the-person's motion is to both remove it from South Side and remove it citywide. The, yes, part of the zoning rewrite, yeah, as opposed, yes, exactly, yes. Correct?
So I, in terms of the process of bringing forward, I mean, we are happy to do so, we would just like, if this was the time to work with the other departments to figure out how to do this to meet their needs, as soon as we could. As soon as we could do that, we think, bring it back. Is that, sorry, does that answer your question?
It, it is absolutely an answer to my question. My question was poorly articulated, so, uh, thank you. I don't have a better way to articulate it. All the persons, St. Perez, Matos and Letterman.
I, I will note this still does not aggress the timing issue. I, I do believe that this would require, uh, more research. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if we're looking at possibly what? Twenty-six, twenty-seven months from now? Even, even worst case, uh, implementing whole citywide new zoning. Each additional month that this takes makes South Side zoning more and more out, like, the way I see it, we are doing this because it is a promise and a commitment we made to this community years ago. Right? That's why we're in this process. But it, it, the further we push it up against our comprehensive zoning, the less of an out, of a positive outcome I think it's gonna have for the community. And the less of an impact it will have. And I, the sillier it feels, which maybe that shouldn't be a consideration. That is my first point. My second point is that in terms of the comprehensive zoning rewrite, I do not believe that we should be giving a, a direct policy directive on anything at this time to, like, right now in this meeting to our staff. Like, in saying that they should look into something is one thing. I think saying this is the policy that we 100% want is not what we should be doing at this time.
All the person's Motos.
I think my question's gonna be kind to, um, the point, the second point of, uh, all the person St. Perez. Let's just say we did the full-on comprehensive rewrite and like, we got feedback from the public that they didn't, they, they wanted a minimum lot size. We can just reverse, if we reverse the, the no minimum lot size in the, in the South Side neighborhood. Right? Theoretically speaking.
I mean, in so much as that anything that was built to be compliant with no minimum lot sizes would then have established rights for us to be then changing zoning to make it non-compliant.
Okay, thank you.
All the person Letterman.
I guess my question is, since with the second item of which we are now the five, the fifth one of, did we not recommend or direct the staff to look into eliminating off-street parking requirements citywide?
No, that's a separate resolution that's coming forward.
Okay.
We did, we did not do that in the vote tonight.
Didn't we say something citywide with off-street parking?
Oh, wait, no, yes, but that was because that's what their recommendation was. We didn't, we didn't add a special, yes, the recommendation.
Was that for the comprehensive zoning plan?
Yes.
Okay, so we already made one recommendation for the comprehensive zoning rewrite, vis a vis citywide elimination of off-street parking? Okay, all right. Well, if we're doing one, I am happy to vote for, uh, a second addition to that, which would be eliminating, uh, minimum lot sizes citywide.
Uh, any further, any further debate on this? Any further debate that's gonna substantively change the positions of members? Cause I think we could just vote. I don't, is it gonna be persuasive or is it gonna just be a statement?
I just wanna distinguish between a recommendation and a directive to staff. I believe those are two different things.
Noted. Yeah, we're on the substitution, yeah. Which procedurally, what we're gonna do is we're gonna vote on whether or not we're gonna change the secondary motion of all the person Keel's amendment to then vote to, you all know how this goes. All right, so all those in favor of first amending all the person Keel's amendment to reflect the no minimum lot sizes in the district and citywide. What we're voting on is just to change the substance of the amendment right now, not to actually direct staff to do anything. All those in favor of the amendment as amended. And that, those opposed? And that fails four to six. So now the main motion is all the person Keel's original motion to just eliminate minimum lot sizes in the South Side Form District. All those in favor of that? Those opposed? Okay. Now, there is an emotion. I move to accept the staff recommendation. Is there a second? Seconded by all the person Motos, all those in favor. We can discuss. All the person win.
Could I move to add a directive to remove minimum lot area and minimum lot width from the comprehensive zoning rewrite?
Just deputy clerk, the motion by all the person win is to accept the staff recommendation and add a directive to remove minimum lot size and minimum lot width from the comprehensive plan. The directive meaning therefore that staff will bring forward a recommendation that we remove those in, as part of the comprehensive rezoning. Is there a second? Seconded by all the person Letterman. Discussion on the amendment, all the person St. Perez.
Would it be possible for us to, instead of directing, like, to, for this to be asking staff to research that policy rather than simply saying that this is what we collectively want?
Procedurally, that is possible, but that is not what the other person moved.
A question for all the person win.
Be okay with that?
If, if all the person win is okay with that, I would like to, uh, amend this to, to reflect that.
Okay. There is a motion, so what, what's the word you're changing? Cause this is portion equal is sitting here having to like write all this. I know, but it's still, that just makes it tedium that you can watch at half speed. It doesn't. I mean, you can call my dad too, he probably has his own notes, but, um, all the person St. Perez, your amendment is going to substitute what word for what word?
I would like to substitute, uh,
How about you just add direct staff to research rather than implement?
That is, that is what I would.
Research.
Direct staff to research, uh, the abolition of minimum lot sizes and, uh, minimum.
Lot widths. Okay. Seconded by all the person Fabrizio. Then please wait. Seconded by all the person Matos, question on the motion, all the person Fabrizio.
I just wanna know, what, what am I missing about this when I, when we think about minimum lot sizes? Like, that you would abolish minimum lot sizes? What am I missing about, like, our concern about flooding, stormwater runoff, children playing on grass, trees? What, no, Patrick, I'm serious. I'm seriously asking, why, what, why do we wanna lit, put our houses on a postage stamp? It's a serious question. I, I, we're having a discussion, I think we, we should.
You, 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 you can, um, I'm I don't, based, yeah, based on both what the all the person is saying and his face, I'm gonna assume his response is not germane, so, um, I'll answer you, which is, which is just to say, uh, all the person, you, 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 and I don't wanna get, I'm, I will not get into a back and forth on this. But you know, you, you have asserted a couple of times tonight that the city cannot, uh, densify its way out of its housing crisis. That is your position and one that I, uh, as well-established, uh, completely believe the opposite of. One's, one sixth, half dozen or another, right? I don't know how the phrase goes, but I, I did, I respectfully disagree. We can absolutely, uh, do significant work to increase density. And, um, sort of my conceptual, my philosophical position here is that our lots should be as small as they are required to be. The, the minimum size should be whatever is compliant with building and fire code. And, uh, if someone wants to build something larger than that, they are entitled to do so. But we should not be putting a floor on what someone can build. Because that's not the role of municipal government in my mind. So, but we're not gonna be engaging in it back and forth. That's just, that's the answer to your question that all the person Keel, uh, declined to respond to. All the person Kumar, you're next.
Actually.
All the person Kumar is recognized. You can get back in the queue, but we're not gonna engage in a back and forth.
Well, I actually also wanted to, to respond to that, um, just because I think it does, um, bring up an important ideological distinction. Like personally, I mean, just to take the examples of like having green space for, for children to play on. I mean, first of all, I think that these changes would move us further towards more pedestrian-centric infrastructure. But second of all, I'm also worried about the kids that don't have roofs over their heads, first of all, before they have a park to play in. And, um, I, uh, agree with, uh, the mayor that fundamentally the, the way that we can, um, address the, the crippling and horrifying housing crisis that we are facing as a city and as a state is to densify in any way that we can. While also keeping in mind that we need to be making like progressive changes and ensuring that everybody has, um, safe streets to walk on and access to public space. But I don't think that's, um, those two are, uh, I think that we can, can move forward and accomplish both of those things through, uh, densification.
On the amendment.
Yes, this is on the amendment. I will note, Margaret, I'm happy to have this conversation with you at any time. We're gonna disagree on this, but, uh, I just wanna remind everybody, and I, I think I'm going to, uh, say two things. One, I'm gonna vote against this ideologically because I think that we need to, well, I don't know, I haven't decided on whether I'll vote on or not. You know where I stand, I think that we should not have minimum lot sizes. I do also wanna say though, um, that doing research on something is far too weak for my liking. We need to be taking substantive action. There is a high likelihood that this, uh, comprehensive zoning reform comes before council in a time that is not as pro-housing as we are now. And I think that's something that everyone should, should be aware of, right? If this comes in 32 months, uh, almost all of us will be gone, I think. Um, or at least be facing having to run again in a new term. And also I'd just like to note, and this is an ideological, um, hill that I've stood on, and I'm gonna continue standing on it. And I appreciate the work of our city staff and the work that they put into this. But we recommended, we already did this once, we recommended, uh, in some cases unanimously, that staff implement these changes. Uh, and then staff came back to us and said, we're actually gonna recommend something else. And then we just voted them down tonight. And so it's great that we wanna say we're gonna recommend this tonight, but we had an opportunity tonight to change zoning code and we didn't. And I think it's important for everyone to reckon with that. And it's gonna be great if in three years we see substantive zoning changes in the city of Ithaca. But also, I hope that if you're not on council anymore and those changes don't happen, that we also realize that when that time comes.
All the person Brown.
My, my, my stance since I've got on this council has been, has been about housing for people, uh, to get adequate, decent housing. I've seen some housing come up and it hasn't been adequate and it hasn't been decent. I've seen some other places come up that has been just amazing, right down the street. My, my concern is, a lot of times when I think about, you know, a lot of this, I'm gonna vote, I don't even know. However, Kayla vote. But I, when I, when I think about these lots and stuff like that, and I go back to Harlem and I realize how people have every little spot, they have built housing. And the people who can afford it has been kicked out of it due to gentrification. And I'm just hoping that doesn't happen here in Ithaca.
Permitting densification is one of the best things we can do to prevent gentrification. Putting a floor on how much property costs by artificially increasing how large the parcel has to be will drive up cost, will price people out. The amendment moved by all the person St. Perez is to amend all the person wins language to be
Can that just be friendly?
It's substantive. To, uh, direct staff to research the elimination of, so accept the staff recommendation as presented and direct staff to research the elimination of citywide, citywide elimination of minimum lot sizes and minimum lot widths. Okay. All those in favor of that amendment to all the person wins amendment? Those opposed? Oh, I thought you voted twice. Uh, that carries seven to three with all the persons Keel, Kumar and Letterman against. Now, the amendment to my motion is all the person wins amended motion, which is the same thing I just said. But procedurally, we had to do it this way because we are not, not at our peak organizational efforts tonight. All those in favor of all the person wins amendment as amended? It's the thing we just voted on, so it's, it's, I will, but I, but you're right, I will, I will restate. Now, this is an amendment to amend my motion to say, adopt the staff recommendation, direct staff to research the citywide elimination. All those in favor of all the person wins amendment to my motion? That carries unanimously. And now, please stop. Now, the main motion has amended, all those in favor of adopting what I've said now like four times. And those opposed? And that carries nine to one with all the person Keel against. So we have accepted the staff recommendation for the South Side Form District and directed staff to research the elimination of, uh, what we basically said we were gonna do like three hours ago.
Point of personal privilege, could you just restate what we just voted on? Just the whole thing would be great.
Council voted to accept the staff recommendation as it appears on this before you. I'm not going to read this out loud. I know that that is the, uh, attempted humor. With the additional sentence of council direct staff to research the elimination of minimum lot and minimum, minimum lot sizes and widths citywide. There, uh,
We have a five-minute recess.
Oh, you may make that motion, but I will vote it, I will vote against it. So all the person, all the person Fabrizio moves for a five-minute recess, seconded by all the person Letterman, all those in favor? Those opposed? It's five-five, it fails. You may, you may step out, but, um, cause everybody else does, whether or not I tell them it's okay. I know. Thank you. That was the last one? Okay. Next is Director Evans and the Climate Action Plan. And Scott, we'll wake you up when we get to the dam.
Am I allowed to amend your recommendations by allowing us to have games of chance in the city on Easter Sunday now? Simple person, I will. I'm back. Two and three, the time. Do you need a charger?
I do.
If so, someone who voted against it would have to move it.
Well, no, that's not true, that's not true. How recess is in order at any time. You're not revisiting.
Oh, that's very cool, I didn't realize that. Thank you, Claude.
Yep. You know what's cool? The thing we ultimately voted on is the thing I said we should do. Seven oh five.
Sorry about, wait, hello?
Sorry about the wait.
Mayor Senior.
Oh, yeah, my dad, right.
Okay, so I wanted, I have sent you all a couple of memos, um, thus far, giving you just sort of an update on the process of the Climate Action Plan. But wanted to make sure that, um, I also had a chance to get in front of you and you'll see this multiple times, um, because it is going to be a large document, it's a lot of information. That is very typical of documents like this, so I just don't want it to come as a surprise. And then end up having like a six hour conversation about the Climate Action Plan because I imagine nobody wants that. As much as that would make, make my heart sick. So this will be a quick one. So, um, some of you, hopefully all of you are aware that in twenty twenty-four, late twenty twenty-four, we decided to shift the focus and the framing of the Ithaca Green New Deal. And so previously it was pretty cut and dry, reduced greenhouse gas emissions. There was an equity component, but, um, there weren't a lot of teeth to it. And it wasn't really spelled out how that translated into the Climate Action Plan. It was really hard to relate to. So we decided to kind of switch things around and then, you know, the, everything with the federal government also started happening. But this sort of reflection time really came after you all unanimously adopted Justice Fifty and we had this time to reflect on the strategy that we were using, um, to implement the Green New Deal and carbon mitigation adaptation resilience. And found that what we had been doing for the past, since twenty nineteen, was really inconsistent with the spirit of the flagship program, Justice Fifty. Um, it was really ignoring sort of what we've been calling the human element of the Green New Deal and of climate change in and of itself. And on top of that, um, climate work is genuinely very, very difficult. No matter how much money you have at your fingertips, uh, no matter how many people live in a city, it is really, really hard. And for a lot of reasons, but municipalities and climate practitioners in general have been trying to use the same solutions and strategies to solve climate change for the past forty plus years, and we have not made significant progress. And I think, you know, there's the definition of insanity where you keep trying the same thing and you see the same results. It's about time that we stop being insane and actually try something different and see if we get different results. So that's the decision that we made in twenty twenty-four. And so what does that new framing look like? Uh, we're trying to create policies that ultimately, and programs that are ultimately relatable, that are really human centered and the human experience, that are consistent with existing, um, municipal plans, like the comprehensive plan, the downtown plan, Southside Plan, things that, um, staff and the community are already used to seeing and language that they're used to seeing. We're also taking a systems approach, so it's not just, you know, energy and buildings. We're really thinking about what are the barriers and what are the opportunities that we may be missing or that we could take advantage of? And then I think more importantly is, you know, we're really widening the spoke here to not just think about the mitigation of climate change, but also how do we adapt and how do we become more resilient? Because at the end of the day, the city could reduce greenhouse gas emissions to zero tomorrow or ten years ago. And ultimately it wouldn't stop anything that's coming our way, whether that's extreme heat or flooding or whatever it is. So we need to adapt to those changes as well. So given all of that, the new plan, the title that we're working with is dignity toward decarbonization. So the idea is that if we are centering human dignity and we are centering sound municipal urban city planning, that decarbonization actually should be a result of those things naturally. Because all of these things do work in a system, and if we're thinking that way intentionally, um, then decarbonization is a natural result. So our new sectors, so just to kind of rewind, a typical climate action plan, the sectors that you would see are like buildings, land use, transportation, really hyper focused on like the sources of where greenhouse gas emissions come from, which for most people doesn't mean a lot and is really, really hard to relate to. And you're like, where do I see myself, my family and my neighbors and all of this? So we also decided to abandon that thinking as well and are suggesting these new sectors. Where our new sectors are housing, public health, labor, equity, power reliability and emergency response. The goals have not changed. They all fit within these new sectors. Again, it's just thinking more systems oriented of how do all of these things fit together? And how do we provide all of the existing, um, services that the city provides while also meeting our Green New Deal goals? So as far as the process, um, we have certainly already started. It's been going on for over a year. First step was to do some risk assessments, basically. So a lot of this, this approach is, is relatively new. So we don't have a lot of data to fall back on. So I don't have, I mean, unless we wanted to go out and hire a, um, a consultant to do really in-depth risk assessments, um, to collect data that currently does not exist. The risk assessments are fairly broad as far as like, you know, in cities where stuff like X exists, then Y can happen. Or if you're not careful about A, then B can happen. So you can expect stuff like that. Some can be more, some of those risk assessments can be more detailed, um, but not all of them. I've also done some interviews, both with, um, internal city staff as well as community partners from nonprofits, from, um, community groups, from activists, from people that don't live in New York State that just have expertise in this area, from academics, just to try and get as much input and expertise, whether that's, um, lived expertise or academic expertise as possible. And then really starting to dive into the research and putting together a first draft. So that has gone through internal review as far as recommendations through staff. And now it is currently out for public feedback. We're releasing it in sections, um, so we're releasing two of those sectors at a time, the public health causing paper. Releasing those two at a time, so it's not super overwhelming trying. And that's going through an open gov survey. We're continuously collecting feedback. And at the same time, we've also already held one event. My hope is that we can hold another. We have extremely limited capacity in the sustainability office, so it's, you know, plus grants to manage and all of the other things that we have to do. So I'm, I'm trying to make it work. I really am. But you will get a comprehensive matrix of all of the public feedback that we do collect. Um, and then finally you'll get a final draft that includes all of these things. Sometime in probably October, November. So this is what you can expect from the recommendations. I know this looks crazy and insane, but ignore the actual, um, text that's there. This is what your recommendations are going to look like. It's intended to be very, very visual, so you can look at a recommendation and you can see how all of those sectors are impacted and not even necessarily have to dive any deeper than that. They're also intentionally vague, so when you adopt a climate action plan, you don't have to know how to implement every single recommendation at that exact time. It is expected that there is additional work to be done for any of those things.
Thank you for making it colorblind friendly.
Is it actually, or are you being sarcastic?
It's, it is. I was being sincere.
So you can, the two examples on the bottom, join resilient cities network or age friendly community. These are act, two actual recommendations that are part of the Climate Action Plan. So you can see that, that top bar is a green bar that represents greenhouse gas emissions reductions. The fuller that bar is, the more color in that bar, um, the bigger the impact. The one below with the little cockroach is resilient, so the more colorful that bar, the more resilience or the more resilient that the community becomes. And then the colored tiles below represent the various sectors. And if they are colorful, then there is a positive impact on those sectors. If they're gray, there's no impact. So just to give you kind of an idea of what things will, will look like. And, um, there is also something that I wanted to just sort of run by you as far as, let's see if I can just switch over. A tool that, um, we're hoping to give council. But again, the text is not super important at this point, but one of the things that we would like to do as part of, this Climate Action Plan is not actually prioritize any of these, uh, recommendations. There are, um, at this point nearly seventy. We've already, we're already thinking about striking some of them, but there will be a lot. And then giving council and the public enough information or trying to so that you can prioritize them yourself. So this is one of the tools that can do that. So let's take, let's take Margaret as an example. Margaret says, I really, really, um, am going to prioritize housing. So, all right, let's go ahead and do that. Margaret also really wants to prioritize public health. So we'll do that as well. You know, the city is in a really tight budget year, so we want something that is nearly, if not cost neutral. We want some really, really easy wins, so we want a short timeline and we want the biggest bang for our buck. So you now have a recommendation that's based on your exact priorities at any given time. So that could be, this could be useful during a budget process. This could be useful during any given, you know, if, uh, higher level of government calls and says, what are your priorities for XYZ? You have a tool that you can lean on to say, okay, here are some, how some of those things intersect. And this could also be available to the public as well. There's still some toying with it that needs to happen, but that's kind of what we.
Thank you very much. First I have all the person Matos, then all the person Keel.
Thank you, Rebecca. Um, my first question is the matrix that you just showed, that would be available through open gov essentially, once it all gets finalized? Or like, how would we have access to it? And maybe that's.
Question that I don't want to answer. I don't know, but I think you'd have, we'd have to figure something out, whether that's SharePoint or it's just a link on the website that takes you to, you know, some Dropbox or something.
Okay, and then my second question is, um, you said pretty much you touched upon limited capacity with outreach. So what could we as council members do to help with the outreach part of this?
That's great. I think, I mean, it's not necessarily that the outreach capacity, it's only, it's the capacity to have in-person events is really limited. So, but certainly sharing the survey out, um, is super helpful. We've put out one press release already and we'll have more each time we release a section. And probably there are more that I can't think of right now, but I think just like visibility is really, but thank you for asking that.
All, all the person Keel.
I just wanted to say that when I looked through the, um, the materials for this before the meeting, I was just really impressed. And I just wanted to say thank you for coming for us today, and, um, I think this is very well done.
All the person St. Perez.
I, I echo that. I also just want to say the Sustainability and Climate Justice Commission has been having conversations about this. You've brought it before them and like everything that we are going to see has been, has been already gone over thoroughly by both our staff and our commission of experts, which I think speaks very well of us organizationally, among other things.
Better or worse, they have seen everything.
All the person Fabrizio.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I was just going to ask if it might be possible to put a save button in the survey? Because it, it is really long and I know.
Oh, like so that if it start, if you start it and have to walk away and come back?
Exactly.
I think it does that automatically.
Really? Because I think I lost mine, like.
I, I don't know, but I can certainly ask.
I think it'd be helpful because it, it is really super long, so it's.
Okay, I will ask, I'll ask and see if that is possible.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca.
All right, somebody wake up Scott.
I would like to move for a three minute recess.
Who may move? Is there a second? Second by all the person Keel, all those in favor of a three minute recess? Those opposed? That is defeated. Uh, Keel, Kumar, St. Perez and Brown in favor. Honestly, Scott, your memo is so good that this really should just be assent to the option, I mean, I would say option three, but you know.
Well, I won't make any damn jokes. So thanks for hearing me tonight. Thanks for hearing me tonight. We're, uh, we're on the eve of our heavy budget season and we have some capital requests certainly. This involves something that's pretty important to the city, um, probably one of the most important pieces of infrastructure in the city, which is our water supply. Many of you are aware that, uh, we have, actually there's five dams in the city. This is our drinking water reservoir. This is, uh, known as sixty foot dam or Potter Falls Dam. Sometimes it's called Fourth Dam. But it is about two miles up the stream from, uh, the water plant, the two oh two water street on Six Mile Creek. Uh, it was built in nineteen eleven, uh, of cyclopean concrete. So why am I telling you cyclopean concrete? It's concrete where they use native river stone and boulders to, as an aggregate to make the concrete bind together, make it stronger. They really knew what they were doing back then because, uh, most of the, the, uh, structural concrete back then was cyclopean concrete. Why not use the native material that's in the area? I'm telling you this because I'm not here to say the dam is, uh, imminently going to breach, something's wrong with it, it's terrible. But I am telling you that it's a hundred and fourteen years old and it needs natural maintenance. The, um, the dam has several components. One is a low level outlet. It's a six foot gate that's at the very bottom of the dam. Uh, the gate no wonder works. It probably hasn't worked since the sixties. There's many reasons for that. One of them is that the EPA came into being in nineteen seventy-two. And one of their mandates to state regulators was to pull back on the use of these structures to dredge. Most dams are dredged by opening the sluice gate every five years or so. They blow all the sediment out, clean out from behind the dam and then close the gate back. They still use that practice. It's still the preferred practice, but now we have to go through permitting, um, wildlife habitat review and develop a maintenance program. That was really never done. I don't have any answers. It was in seventies. I'm not sure why the city had never pursued that. But in the meantime, fifty years, sixty years has passed and now there's twenty-five feet of sediment that's behind a six foot dam. All of that load is not designed for the dam. Sediment really needs to be removed off the face of the dam. And of course, all that load on this sluice gate, uh, prevents it from being open. So every time the DEC comes and inspects the dam, that's one of their biggest complaints is that we have no way to immediately relieve the water behind using the drain. There's another component on the dam, which is a gatehouse and, uh, it's a, essentially it's a large tower with, uh, valves, to shut off the intakes into the gatehouse, shut off the, uh, pipe that leads to the water plant and to operate the sluice that I mentioned. Uh, the gatehouse has two intakes, one's at the fifty foot depth, uh, and one is at the twenty-five foot depth. Because of all the sediment, the fifty foot depth intake is no longer usable. That probably silted over in the fifties, we, we figured. So we've been getting a hundred percent of our water from the twenty-five foot elevation. Why do you want two depths in intake? And it's because of water quality. You get a thunderstorm, turns the river into chocolate milk, you might want to close the upper intake and use the lower intake. Summertime, it's easier to treat cold water than it is warm water, you might want to use lower intake. So that's very important. The gatehouse is in various states of disrepair. It's a safety issue for staff. Uh, we don't let them go in it anymore. The, the floor is crumbling into the pit. The roof is coming down. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of issues with the surface of the dam. So, uh, the dam, when it was built, would have something called a wear surface put on. And the wear surface is nothing more than something called shock cream. Sometimes it's called gun eye. And the wear surface is nothing more than something called shockcrete, sometimes it's called gunite, which is an outer protective layer that's, that's uh, sort of poured over the dam, it's actually sprayed on. It's about four inches thick. And in nineteen thirty-five, when the dam was twenty-five years old, that was the first time we needed to repair this wear layer. And wear layer is there to absorb trees coming over, to absorb the scouring that happens when boulders and stones go over it. And after a while, it does what it's supposed to do, it wears away. From the thirties, they repelled people down and they would patch the cracks in it. And then it was left alone for another fifty years. And then in nineteen eighty-six, they completely replaced the wear layer. Jack hammered off the face of the dam, they, they put a new surface on it. And here we are fifty uh, years after that, and so it's time to do that again. So in twenty fifteen, uh, the, the city commissioned the redesign of its water plant. And we ended up spending about thirty-seven million dollars for a brand-new water plant. We painted our water tanks, we did all kinds of stuff. And we also had the, the um, the, the designers do another phased approach to rehabilitate the dam. So we had design drawings, we had a whole project prepared for the dam. And at the time, to do the deficiencies that are noted in the memo, which includes reoperating the sluice, putting a new gunite surface on the dam, new gatehouse, new intake structure, doing what's called a safe yield analysis, determines how much sediment is in the reservoir. And then putting in rock anchors and say, well, okay, the dam is stable and it's very strong, why do we need rock anchors? And that's because the regulations have changed. The dam was designed, it was designed for a maximum flood of eleven feet of water over the crest of the dam. Somewhere along the line FEMA decided to re-figure its worst-case flood scenario. And now they want twenty feet of water over the top of the dam. Well, it's not designed for that, now it's not compliant, so we have to spend money to put different rock pinings in to address a larger flood. So all that stuff was prepared in twenty sixteen. Uh, the city opted instead of spending even more money to look for alternate sources of funding. Went to EFC, we looked at uh, water quality improvement funds and there really wasn't a whole lot of infrastructure grants in the late teens, in the two thousands. Covid came, that delayed everything three, three years and here we are in the other end of Covid in twenty-one or twenty-two. And the dam project moves from the rear burner to the middle burner. And then I got an interesting phone call in October of twenty-four from FEMA. And they said, hey, we've got all this, this, this money for dam rehabilitation and we'd like to give you some. So how much is it gonna cost? And I said, with dredging included? They said, no, just for the improvements. About five and a half million dollars and voila, in the spring of this year, we got five and a half million bucks. The problem is, that just addresses the actual physical hard costs of repairing the dam. There's still all that silt that we have to get off the face of the dam. And at about a hundred dollars a cubic yard, there's about eighty thousand cubic yards behind the dam, that's another five million bucks. So you know, we've got a current project right now of just over nine million, I would say ten million, just for sake of argument. We went ahead and did an RFP to get a consultant together. We have since contracted with Ramble. Ramble is, was, is the new O'Brien and Gere. O'Brien and Gere was the original designer of all of the rehabilitation uh, drawings for the, the dam. And um, you know, they came in at a very low cost because the design's already done and it's their designs, that kinda makes sense. So they're on board, um, but we don't have a project, right? So that's why I'm here tonight. There's a caveat with this money. That is that the money is available until September of twenty-seven, it's not very far away, it's two years from now. It takes a full year to get a project off the ground and running, especially one that requires dredging because we have to enter the water body. The DEC doesn't like that unless we have a permit, there's a process to go through, which would take anywhere from six months to a year just to get stream entry permit. So the sooner we operate on this, the better. So really I've put together three options in here, one is to do nothing and I hope you all agree that that's really not an option. I wouldn't say this has been kicked down the can down the road before, but I think we're at the point where the DEC keeps coming in and they keep adding more deficiencies that have not been addressed because these are all nuts and bolts deficiencies. Second alternative is to just maybe accept FEMA's grant, figure it out. I don't think that's an option either because again, the five and a half million dollars is really for dam safety improvements. Physical stuff, still have to remove the sediment. So even if we did partial improvements, the sediment is laying on the face of the dam that doesn't address the uh, the drain, the chest of the dam. Move sediment, doesn't address the gatehouse, you have to remove the sediment around the gatehouse, replace the gatehouse. Doesn't address resurfacing the dam because half the dam is exposed on the downstream side with the other half's buried in sediment. So I don't know if there's another option other than to fully approve this project and come up with a way to uh, maybe uh, put together a capital reserve over the next couple of years because five and a half million will get us through, um, probably, you know, if we have to spend this by the end of twenty-seven, it'll probably fund enough of the project to get us through twenty-seven using their money, but then we have to have a project plan for the remaining. And that could be, say, two and a half million this year or twenty-six, two and a half million for twenty-seven, I don't know. Just presenting you with options and something to think about. But I think during capital project time, this is one of the projects we're gonna be approaching with. I wanted to update you as quickly as possible. You may have read an article on this, uh, I think the Ethic Voice did it. And um, you know, one of the criticisms was that we didn't bring this to council. We didn't have anything to bring to you. I think whoever interviewed DEC at the time didn't really know. One of the accusations was that we hadn't filed paperwork or that council was negligent in not approving this project. We haven't been presented with paperwork. We are still in the infancy of getting this approved through you, um, getting all of the project paperwork lined up. Because the, the feds are not gonna lend us money unless they have a project. We have a project, we have a funding stream, we have a plan. And right now, we just re-contract again with Ramble, who are developing that plan and that schedule. So that's where we are with it, um, but I just wanted to clear the air of why they haven't been presented with us in the first place. Because up until a month ago, we really had nothing.
All right, we'll go ahead and start taking comments. I'm going to recognize myself first, uh, both because of the hour and because of my strong feeling on this. I agree with uh, Scott's recommendation. In my mind, the first option is just a complete non-starter. Fifteen thousand dollars a day means that we'd be paying five and a half million dollars over the course of a single year. In the event that they do start fining us. I ran on a platform of ending deferred maintenance. If this is gonna bring us into compliance for fifty to a hundred years, I know we uh, sort of like shake fists idly at some of the pictures on the walls for maintenance having been deferred in years previous. Not gonna be responsible for doing that, so I think the option three is the way to go. All the person Keel.
I would like to agree with the mayor. I was surprised and a little shocked that we received emails urging us to think to how terrible the situation was with the dam from previous common council members who kicked this. You, you maybe are not gonna say, but I will, who kicked this can down the road? I was kind of blown away by that, actually. And I'd also like to say, I do, I am worried um, that this project is gonna be more, significantly more than what we have quoted. I don't, I still don't think it's an option, I think we have to go forward with it. You said uh, eighty thousand, I think, cubic yards, is that correct? It's a hundred dollars a.
Yeah, it was put out, set two hundred thousand just to get a sort of a cost quote. Because you know, our best estimate is uncertain behind the dam, but in reality, we're trying to build a new intake structure. We're just gonna go out into the reservoir as well, so excavate around that for the piping. And some type of excavation where the intakes for those are, so that, that's sort of included in the, in the tally. But I, I'm not disagreeing with you, I think we don't have a firm handle on the dredging.
It also won't get cheaper if we wait.
No, that's, that's what I was gonna say, and I mean, you know, we've got this increased cost that we don't know there. Also, we were quoted for this project, you know, uh, is twenty sixteen was when we were quoted for this project?
Sixteen, first stab at, at doing this, um, just because we had designers house, they looked at it. Back then, uh, the project was estimated between five and six million dollars, so in ten years, raised off.
Yeah, I, I did the math on this earlier and it looks like it'd be about nine point seven million, assuming construction inflation costs help. So I mean, I think that's probably, from my perspective, what I'm thinking about in terms of the real range for this project. After inflationary costs, again, I still don't think we have a choice and I agree with the mayor that we have to move forward with this. Um, I would like to investigate after we spend uh, the feds' money, creating a special assessment district for everybody in collaboration. I'm not really sure where the lines end for our water system and other people's water systems. But I really would like to make sure that we're not, we have a plan for how we're assessing this equitably across people who use water. And what other ways that this might be? I'm, I'm interested if there might be grants from the DEC and different things too, to start to kind of cover those holes. But yeah, that's down the line a little bit.
Mr. Ledman.
Just wanna say thank you, Scott, and um, I appreciate you laying out the options really clear and it sounds like this is a Hobson's choice here in terms of uh, uh, picking this. Is there anything else you think we should be made aware of other than before we'd go and vote on this in um, and when we do the capital projects in a couple of weeks?
I think that it's such a limited amount of time they're giving us to spend this money. Just my experience getting a project off the ground, you know, hire the consultant, that's great, they're already working on it, that's great. We could always draw them, we have money, so I should clarify. We uh, did have a small capital project for dam safety that was uh, put in place in twenty fifteen. It's almost spent down, we're paying the consultant out of that right now. And that, that purpose was sort of a seed fund, it was meant as a capital reserve. We had to do some structural invasive engineering evaluation of the dam at the time and paid for a lot of that. Pouring through the dam and doing surveys and taking samples and things like that, so a lot of it's been spent already. But that's how we're funding Ramble, so if this body chooses not to fund this project, we could always just terminate the contract and, and figure it out. But um, so I, you know, their schedule right now um, is to have a bid package for us for, for instruction by the end of next year. So uh, that gives us basically nine months to spend five and a half million dollars of FEMA's money. I don't know how we're gonna do it, I just don't. And so that's, that's what we're hand-wringing. A lot of this depends on whether the state, um, the habitat offices, the permitting offices will hurry up and get us the stream entry permit that we need. My experience is sometimes it takes a year. And uh, you know, so we're, they, they have to be fully aware that, you know, I mean, they're working with the safety group and the DEC dam commissions. And they understand this stuff, but sometimes this stuff just drags, I'm not sure why.
All the person Fabrizio, all the person Matos.
So this is exactly the kind of project that we need to be spending money on. And I'm, I'm still just trying to get my head around the fact that we have decades of deferred maintenance and it's, it's just shocking and um, and very regrettable. I'm wondering um, a couple of things. Is there any possibility of giving, getting an extension for the time that we would need to be able to use the money? And I'm worried, because I'm worried if we don't make that, then we've committed to five and a half million dollars. And then it's like five and a half million dollars plus the rest of it that we owe. So is there a possibility to have a conversation? To see about an extension of that? And also when they, when they asked you, how much is it gonna cost? If you said, if you had said nine million dollars, would they have said, okay, we'll write you a check?
We've already had that conversation with them, they said, at this point, the federal government is not giving time extension. So um, they said, plan uh, as a use it or lose it schedule. The second is that, um, sorry, I'm tired. Your second question was.
I know.
Who'd ask for more money?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. First, they asked, how much would a full-time contract cost?
Right.
They said, we went back to Ramble and said, I'm up with this nine million dollars, I think it was eight million, nine million, this is last year now. They said, well, if it has to do with dredging, this money is for the safety improvements, the hard construction cost improvements only. So what would that be? And then we reported that that was five and a half million, so that's worth it.
So about the permitting, I think we absolutely have to like call on our state legislators, like they have to help us, they, that's just absurd. And um, so if we didn't meet the deadline, then it becomes a fifteen-million-dollar project for us, right?
You know, I, I should add that uh, I, I also indicated that this is known as the Fourth Dam. We have Vanadas Dam, there's the thirty-foot, which is the original city drinking dam. There's a dam in front of the thirty-foot downstream.
Yeah.
It's used as a sort of a plunge pool, a scour pool, so it built up water up past the dam so that when the water comes over, it doesn't corrode out anything. The Vanadas and the thirty-foot are also on the DEC inspection list, and those are also deficient. The DEC is very insistent that we either take them down or we come, come up with some funding to rehabilitate those as well. They're not looking at those as important because of, they know that the sixty-foot is our drinking um, source. But the thirty-foot especially is also a high-hazard dam according to the CSE.
So um, I'm wondering, like, maybe you've done this already, but to talk with our federal and, and state legislators to see what other money, not official grant, you know, that's out there for you to apply for, but what other money they might be able to like come up with? Because obviously, this is, you know, an extraordinary expense for us to, I mean, we have to do it, but. But I think also I was going to ask if the grants administrator um, is involved in researching funding options?
She is out on maternity leave.
Right.
Yep.
But this has been going on for a while before that.
Heard what I had mentioned, so called him the cool earlier, but uh, we, Ramble is our, our consultant and they are tasked with also looking for alternate sources. So we will have a watchful eye from um, professionals out there who are used to being in funding streams. So at least that's some hope for us.
Right, right, but I'm also talking about like our, our local legislators um, who have discretionary funding. It's probably not huge, they're not people who've been in office for a long time. I, I mean, except for like Maurice Hinch, or so Maurice Hinchy, oh my gosh, I can't believe I said that. That's, that's a long time, um, except for Chuck Schumer, um, who probably has zero clout and not, I shouldn't even say that. But at any rate, you know what I'm saying? We need to have those, I think we need to have those personal conversations with their staff and, and say we are in desperate straits. And I actually can't believe that they would have allowed this to go on for so very long. But why did dredging? Why did they say you couldn't dredge from the nineteen seventies and then? And then we have this problem?
It was frowned on to do what we call flush dredging, um, yet that's the method that most dams use. They just open the drain every couple of years, just kick the sediment off the face of the dam, close the drain.
Maybe we should be suing the DC.
You know, and, and the arg, the, the argument is of course that if the dams weren't there, the sediment would be in the lake anyway. Uh, that, that is the argument, so.
I mean, they said we couldn't dredge, now we have a problem. Okay, thank you for your work on this.
Final word, all the person Brown.
No, I just wanna ask about the um, the natural uh, rocks and things that you got from the indigenous people? Like, is that still holding up or, because it's, thank God for it, because it held up this long? So is it, is it still uh, in good, not good condition, of course not, but is it still keeping, keeping it safe?
Yes, it is, yes, it is. Like I said, they knew what they were doing structurally back then. And uh, we now don't use cyclopean concrete per se in um, structural applications because they have additives and things to make it just as strong. But back then, that was the method they came up with and um, it's uh, been here a hundred and fourteen and there's no reason to believe it won't be here for another hundred and fourteen, but it needs a little TLC right now.
I think you've heard, sense of the body is that we're all in favor of not uh, deferring maintenance on this. And we can uh, expect a thank you letter from fifty years into the future.
Fifty years us.
All right. With that. With that. There is no further business, we are adjourned.
Thank you, thanks Scott.